Good evening. It's now 6:30 PM on Monday, April 29th. We are here to hold a public hearing regarding Order Number 2019-041, a land disposition agreement regarding Ross Parking Area Phase One, which is currently pending in the Finance Committee, Ordnance Committee, and Downtown and Economic Development Committee of the City Council. I'm going to invite, thanks all for being here tonight, I'm going to invite folks to come up, first to speak for and then to speak against. Those willing to speak are allotted two minutes to do so. We're going to have the clerk time that process. So just please state your name and your address and we'll get going. So if you'd like to form an orderly queue. There's also sign-in sheets in the back, you can sign for or against, so please.
I've got 11 extra copies of my condensed remarks. I'm Dr. Vincent Kevick, 8251 South Central, 45-year resident, just retired before. My doctorate is in public and municipal finance. I've got a 30-year career in healthcare finance. Some of what I, based on last hearing, I've tempered some of my remarks, but these are how they reflect. The hospital site was never a viable site for healthcare and medical services. Price paid was affected by the additional costs associated with that. Developer made a rational decision. Despite the city's hopes and dreams, there is very limited demand for medical services in Quincy Center. As a result, the developer knew the restriction on the use of the downtown parcels, which lowered the market value. As Mr. Gary said, when there is not material demand, you need an inducement. The negotiations that took place were part of the inducement process. In order to comply with the restrictions on the parcel, the venture would command less than full market rents associated with the highest and best use. It is not the highest and best use. Taxes are not being waived because healthcare providers expect it as nonprofits. According to the assessors of the town of Waymouth, South Shore Hospital and nonprofits elsewhere have pilot agreements. On Libby Way and elsewhere in Waymouth, the buildings owned by for-profit developers and occupied by businesses do not normally get a healthcare abatement. I believe they took place for another purpose. I wanted to get the truth out, according to my interpretation. The forgiving of property taxes for any reason such as new jobs or induce certain types of development does mean that the burden passes to other taxpayers in the class when the rate is set because the total assessed value for that class of real estate does not grow.
My name is Leo Martin. I have been involved in ownership and management of retail and office space in downtown Quincy for 35 years. For the first 20 years' time of that period, it was a constant struggle to rent space and keep tenants. Many of the businesses closed within the first year of opening. Over the last 10 years, both rentals and occupancy have consistently improved. We own and manage 25 stores, which are currently 100% occupied. Our office space is at 90% occupancy. We had a store, Quincy Market, at the corner of Washington Street and Temple, vacated this April 18th, and we re-rented it April 23rd, six days later. I believe the occupancy of space in downtown Quincy is due to the many new developments and infrastructure improvements, not the least being the new City Hall Plaza. When you see Quincy developers like Peter O'Connell, the Elvin Brothers, and DJ McKinnon acquiring and developing parcels, you know we're heading in the right direction. I have had business dealings with the Fox Rock Company and found them to both be professional and honorable. I have visited their holdings and surrounding communities. Their properties are first-class in both construction and management. Fox Rock brings a lot to the table, track record, financial strength, and a strong improvement management team. The availability of private and public funding in a vibrant economy at the same time is a rare occurrence, one that can keep Quincy's growth going with great benefits to its economy and community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Those in favor?
Nice to see you. This is a little beyond my pay grade.
Sorry, sir. Could you just state your name and address?
That's what I said. I don't know what I'm doing up here.
It's okay.
Jack Donahue, 98, California, Ave West Quincy. My family's been here for five generations, 200 years in the city of Quincy. I know most of you people up here on a personal level. I know a lot of the people out here and certainly over here. Grand Asia is a business I'm affiliated with, which is right on the cusp over here. I've been there the last 117 days in a row for prom and bridal. I talk to a lot of people about a lot of different things. I don't think I'm really here to discuss very quickly what this whole project is about, except the fact that Quincy is in the right direction. I think you people on the City Council are doing a great job. I think the Planning Board's doing a great job. But it will be developed, and I would just emphasize the fact that I hope that the right people do these projects. Any parcel you see that's empty, that has nothing on it, it will be developed. The city of Quincy is kind of under siege, in a sense, because of its popularity and its success. The schools are fabulous. This particular park out here is a world-class. I'm there every day. I talk to people from virtually all over the world. So I'm here just to give credit to this body, to the mayor's office and the great work that they're doing. I'm not political. I'm not running for anything. I know a lot of people are talking about other topics over here up at Whitwell, where my brother lives, and I know there's a lot of concern. My emphasis tonight in being here is because I believe in the city, I love the city, and I know about development. I was the first person on South Beach in Miami in 1980. I was the first person there in 1991. I was about seven years ago contacted for $1.2 billion, which I could raise, because Street Works, I believe, fell out. And then there was another group, the Mutual Insurance Company of some sort, they came in. So my people just said, "Okay." So I know about development, but I know about this city. And I didn't know it as well as I did until I came home and I started selling you your wedding gowns and your prom gowns and meeting the city councilors.
Thank you very much, sir.
10 seconds? Okay. I'm just here to say I think the city's in the right direction, and I hope that you know that this will be developed, and I hope it's the right people. And I didn't know Fox Rock's from Fox and Hounds, and they're a great group from what I'm seeing, so I hope that they are the ones that can work with you and make this thing happen. So that's really all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next, in favor, please.
I'm Steve Briggs. I represent Quincy Mutual Group, and I'm a property owner at Revere Road. Quincy Mutual is an insurance company. We don't typically get involved in developments, but when, a number of years ago, when we heard the exciting plans that were on the table, we got, we did get excited and we got involved. As most of you know, we are involved with West of Chestnut. And I remember the city as a youngster coming here with my parents, when we had Remex and such, and my mother actually worked at Remex as a high school kid. But I think we have the momentum now. We're coming back, we're bringing Quincy back, and I'm just here to say that I approve of the project here, and I think we should keep the momentum going to bring back Quincy to what it was, and back in the '60s. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in favor of?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Jim Edwards. I work at Holmes and Edwards Architects, located at 26 Chestnut Street, directly across from west of Chestnut, the building that Mr. Briggs just mentioned. Holmes and Edwards moved its office from downtown Boston to the square in 1989. We've been in that same building ever since, and there has been almost nothing going on in that entire period of time. That's changed. There's a new vibe on the street, construction has started, new development is following on the heels of that construction, and restaurants upon restaurants are teeming with people, and the sidewalks are alive finally, and it's interesting and gratifying to see this happen. Then there's this park, just mentioned out front, a wonderful addition to the city and a place for all kinds of new activities in the city. And I have to say, if I could, just one word of thanks to this council for their encouragement and support in the renovations of this particular building and of Goddington Hall, of course. Maintaining the built environment as you strive for future development signals clearly to lots of people that the city is maintaining its heritage as part of its vision for the future. A lot has happened. There's still a great deal of work to do. I look forward to having, hearing these results of the City Council's great efforts trying to forge equitable agreement with Fox Rock on the properties in question. And more buildings mean more jobs and more people and vibrancy in the city that we've been searching for for a long, long time. I thank you for the opportunity to say these few words to you tonight.
Thank you very much. Next, in favor of?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Ron Yakabuchi. I reside at 430 Adams Street. I'm here in my capacity as an abutter, I guess you could say, and also as the director of the Workforce Development Department. Our Career Center literally can look out on the back door of this project as it develops every day. But my concern is not just that, my concern is the jobs that this particular project are going to create. Not just jobs that are provided during the development phase, but jobs that are provided, you know, when the thing is built. But more importantly, jobs that are provided, because this is a catalyst to growth, and we need those jobs. Our unemployment rate is low right now, but that's not a true indicator of what's going on out there. The participation rate is something that we also measure, and that's not as strong as it should be. There are many people that are unemployed that come into our Career Center, hundreds every week, that are looking for work, and a lot of these people exhaust their benefits, and when they do, they're not counted anymore. So I ask you to strongly consider supporting this particular measure because of the jobs involved and the impact it's going to have in terms of the future of the city, as well as in terms of the employment for people. It's a critical thing. I would encourage you to take that leap of faith and to vote in support of this particular measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Still in favor of?
Thank you, council. Michael Bellotti, Quincy College President, and I appreciate this opportunity. You know, the college has been around since 1958, and it has survived over those years because of the support it's received from the residents of Quincy in the surrounding areas. For us to go to the next level, whether it's nursing our biotech program, which is recognized as one of the best entry-level biotech programs in the state, it's these type of partnerships that we're looking for. What the city is doing, and what hopefully you folks do in the near future to approve of this program, it's going to allow us not just to create strong clinical partners, but also a path for employment for a lot of our students. And it's going to also allow us to build upon already about 3,500 students go through those doors on a weekly basis, there's 200 employees, and we'd love to grow with the city. And the synergisms are just going to make us all much stronger. So, you know, I am in support of it as the president of Quincy College, because I know what it'll do for our institution. It's going to help us not just survive, but thrive over the years to come, and we're incredibly excited for these opportunities in healthcare, because of the programs that are in place already at the college. Thank you.
Thank you. Those in favor of?
Chairman, members of the council. Tim Cahill, 51 Grenwald Road. I come here on behalf of the Quincy Chamber of Commerce to speak in favor of this proposal. But I also come here as someone who's sat in your seat through many development projects in the city of Quincy's history. Marina Bay, Crown Colony, the Walmart Project, Granite Links, all of those projects are very similar to this project. It's a change. You're taking an undeveloped or underutilized piece of property and turning it into something valuable. You're creating housing, you're creating recreational facilities, you're creating nightlife that I think belongs in Quincy Center. Every one of those projects that I had to vote on with my colleagues in the council, I questioned whether it was the right way to go or the wrong way to go, and it turned out that the votes we took in affirmative action to grow this city have turned out very well. I don't regret any of those votes. There is a bit of a leap of faith, but as Leo Martin said, and he knows more than I do, these developers are strong, they have a good track record, and I think you have to put your faith in the people who are actually building it, whether it's Peter O'Connell or Rob Hale. This will be good, not just for the downtown, which is obviously a priority of mine, but I believe this will be good for the entire city, because a city of our size should have medical facilities, not maybe a hospital, but medical facilities, and the downtown needs to continue to grow. We're this close to getting over the hump of turning downtown Quincy into something that we'll all be proud of, that will be vibrant, and that will help our city in the long run, bring more tax revenue to the city. Without the projects that I mentioned before, there would be no Quincy High School, there would be no central middle school, there would be no Sterling, because we wouldn't have the money to do it. This project will be a catalyst for growth and economic development throughout the entire downtown, which will give you and this administration more money to spend on the important issues that will affect citizens throughout the city. So I am enthusiastically in favor of this, as is Quincy City, not Quincy City Council, the Quincy Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cahill. Still in favor of?
My name's Mary Jo Brogna. I'm a resident of 24 Alden Street. I agree with everything that was said earlier in terms of the development in this project. I'm a healthcare nurse executive for many years, and I'm also a member of the board of Quincy College. I wanted to talk about healthcare for a minute, because the future of healthcare is definitely in the outpatient setting. We see Medicare each year issuing notice of procedures that are now going to be outpatient. For example, in 2020, joint replacement, hip and knee replacements are going to be an outpatient-only procedure. I think it's important for Quincy to build more medical facilities. As a previous speaker said, not a hospital, but the ambulatory centers. I think it's going to be vital. I think it's centrally located, and I think it's something that's lacking in the city of Quincy. So I'm in favor of this, and I urge you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is DJ McKinnon from Atlantic Development, and I also wanted to speak in favor of this proposal. I think the city has done a great job over the last decade or so, preparing the downtown for redevelopment. You know, an awful lot of investment went into, you know, infrastructure, beautiful park we have out front. It's created a great vibrant area that's ripe for development. One of the first bigger developments we've seen downtown, which at the time had a fair amount of risk associated with, was the West of Chestnut project. Having seen that take place, it spurred additional residential development downtown. It helped to show the market that people could afford to pay the rents, that the activity level was sufficient to justify that project, and now we're seeing, you know, additional spin-off in the residential sector as a result of it. You know, we now have a local entrepreneur who's willing to make a significant investment. With all these, you know, comes a fair amount of risk. Thankfully, he has, you know, a very, very good tenant, and I think by allowing this development to go forward, it's really going to help show the market that Quincy Center is ripe for more commercial development. It helps to convince lenders, other tenants, people that may be interested. So I think it really is going to be a catalyst for more commercial development downtown. Would love to see that happen, and I strongly encourage you to support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could ask, speaking to the microphone or adjust it accordingly, I think we're having some trouble at home hearing these.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, councilors, executives. Sean Gell, I reside at 3130 Street.
How's that better?
Thank you.
I've had the chance to speak with most of you individually and express my positive opinion in terms of this project moving forward. I just wanted to come and register, you know, that I'm here this evening in favor of the project, and that the significance of this project and the timing of this project for what's happening is very important, and I strongly urge you to support the measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those in favor?
My name is Greg Barza. I think I'm unique here in the sense that I am an abutter of this property, living in a pleasant place. Despite the fact, my wife and I have moved here just about a year ago, because we wanted a place where we could feel comfortable, that it was urban, public transportation, all of that. And so far, it's been a good choice. I have to say that I'm in favor of this, even though you guys spent most of last summer just disturbing my sleep with all the sewer work that went on. I'm in favor of this, but I would also like to urge you, because I believe that the plans for the affordable housing and the hotel that's proposed are not solidified yet. Would you please do it and get this thing done? I think it'll be a great, great help for Quincy.
Thank you very much. Any of those in favor?
Jonathan Miller from LBC, property owners at 1500 Hancock Street. Here tonight to speak in favor of the proposed LDA between the city of Quincy and Fox Rock Properties. We view this proposal, should it pass, as a large step forward in the redevelopment and revitalization of Quincy Center, and sincerely hope to see it come to fruition. As someone else actively developing in the center, we believe it would bring a tangible economic benefit to the entire city while bringing a much-needed commercial office component to the center at scale. Frankly, it's something we're very excited about. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Those speaking in favor of?
John Oderfeld, 62 Grenwald Road. I've gone to so many meetings over the last four years. I've watched so many developers, I've seen so many projects, and I do not want to step in front of progress. And right now, we are making progress in Quincy. I want to take this project and compare it to like microeconomics and macroeconomics. And microeconomics would be this project, but macro is Quincy as a whole. And as a whole, this project will make all the other property in the diff go up in value. So the net effect will be a positive result for the taxpayers of the city of Quincy. We've had Eric Mason come up here many times and assure you guys that the diff does pay for itself. So I would just believe Mr. Kavanaugh and believe Mr. Mason when they come up here and give you that expert testimony. I'm not an economist myself, although I did take economics in high school. But I would say that I am in favor of this project. We have to make sure we pick a developer that can survive in a downed economy, and the economy could turn in a minute, and Fox Rock can definitely survive. This is like a Hall of Fame night of everyone who's everyone in Quincy tonight. I'm honored to actually be up here and speak. And right now, you know, Fox Rock, I don't want, I want to throw props out to Quincy Mutual, because that first project is what really started this project off. And we need to finish Quincy Center, and we need to make sure that it's a good place. We have to stop looking at what this individual project costs, how much is this going to cost? The net result is taxes are probably going to go up. They're going up everywhere. Quincy's a better place today, it's a safer place today. City Council, you guys are doing a great job. The mayor, I want to give you a thumbs up, Mayor Cole. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those speaking in favor?
I'm Michael Feenan. I'm a business owner in Quincy, and I'm here representing the Chamber of Commerce Board as well. We've heard a lot of people mention the direction that the city's heading in and the progress that we've made so far, and what we seem to be heading towards is creating a world-class city for people to live, work, and play in. And so far, a lot of what's taken place is, we've checked the residential blocks, we've added, you know, I don't know how many, but most of what's been done so far is added to the number of residential units in the downtown area. We've seen restaurants and bars come in. So one of the last remaining components there is a place for people to work. The number of jobs that a project like this would seem to create would certainly help to check that box, and, you know, I think that it's the next logical step. You really don't see many world-class cities without a world-class medical facility in their downtown areas, so I think that, you know, this makes a lot of sense. And, you know, we also want to see sort of an influx of younger families come in and, you know, live, work, and play in the downtown area. As a father of two, we're, you know, I'm at the doctor every other week with my kids, so a medical facility downtown makes perfect sense in that sense as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any speaking in favor?
My name is Vincent Coyle, business agent with the Ironwork Circle Local Seven, also a member of the South Shore Building Trades. I was born here in the city of Quincy, at Quincy City Hospital. Looking forward to see another medical center here in Quincy. Had an apartment a little while with my mother and father on Lawn Ave. Spent many, many a days at my cousin's house on South Street, so I'm looking forward to this project, and hopefully we can put our men and women at Quincy to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Those speaking in favor?
Okay, not seeing anyone else. Those opposed?
Mr. Chairman, if you'd indulge me for a moment, we, I'd like to be here, standing here, not in favor nor opposed. It's very similar to an NFL draft. At the end of round three, they go into the compensation picks, then they proceed to the next round, if you would indulge me, sir. Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Will Smith. I live at 15 Glendale Road. As the chairperson of the 114 Whitwell Street Site Committee, I'm here tonight representing the Hospital Hill Neighborhoods Association, HHNA. As you know from our neighborhood association, as you know, our neighborhood association encompasses the area surrounding the former Quincy Medical Site at 114 Whitwell Street. Since the initial proposal to redevelop the site was made in October of 2018, our membership has increased over 20%. Our neighborhood continues to be very concerned about the redevelopment efforts of 114 Whitwell. What is, is that good? This one works better? Okay. Appreciate it. What is unique, what is unique about the Ross Parking LDA from all the previous LDAs is that this LDA links the redevelopment of the downtown parcel, the Ross parking lot of land, with the redevelopment of a parcel, 114 Whitwell Street. It's land that is surrounded by residential homes in one of those neighborhoods that makes Quincy as special as it is. We take no position on the Ross Lot development, but we wish to address the LDA's implication for the 114 Whitwell Street development. In fact, the LDA's linkage of these parcels compels us to make a statement about the impact on our neighborhood. For those in the audience tonight who agree with our statement, we have created a signature sheet that you can sign showing your support. We acknowledge that the redevelopment of Quincy Center is necessary for the city to prosper and move forward into the 21st century. As we said last October, we agreed that this underutilized site and obsolete hospital must be redeveloped, and we welcome the new residents that will come into the neighborhood. However, the legitimate concerns of our neighbors cannot be ignored. The redevelopment of each of these parcels is complex and challenging on its own, in its own right. To continue to link these redevelopments could potentially require decisions to be made by this body and/or the Planning Board that could be beneficial to one redevelopment effort and harmful to the other. We do believe that this is not in the best interest of the city or the neighborhood for one development- for one development effort to sacrifice for the other. It is in this context that we offer the proposed amendment language in front of you today to unlink the redevelopment of these two parcels. Our next presenters will speak in more detail about this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I'm going to yield the rest of my time to Mr. Quinn, and I support his comments.
If I may yield to Will Farrell to complete his.
As you consider and deliberate this proposal, I'd like to quote from the recent Quincy 400 brochure, "Preserving our past, enriching our future." One of the six pillars is entitled neighborhoods. The city of Quincy, and I quote, "The city of Quincy has always been one made of strong neighborhoods. It is essential that we work to protect the identity of each individual neighborhood. We take pride in our neighborhoods and work to maintain that community feeling. We are fortunate to have many neighborhood associations made up of people who care about giving back to support your little slice of heaven. Enhancing and protecting the things that make our neighborhoods great is the central theme of this area." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, members of the city council and citizens of Quincy. My name is Ernest Gervino. I live at 61 Colonial Drive. I'd like to yield my time to the speaker behind me.
My name is Robert Quinn, and I reside at 20 Dixwell Avenue. I've lived there for the past 32 years and lived in Quincy for more than 40 years. I have been honored and privileged to have the role of Assistant City Solicitor and appear before this body on many and numerous occasions. I'm here tonight to talk about the LDA and particularly about the impact on the legal requirements for the property at Whitwell Street. In particular, there is a use agreement, use restriction, as you all know, that was imposed, that was required by the state legislature in the home rule petition that was originally authored by this body and signed by Mayor Sheetz back in 1999. That use restriction is still in effect today. It was, it was deeded, it was part of the deed when the city deeded the property over to the Quincy, Quincy Medical Center, which was the affiliate of the Boston Medical Center back in 1999. That use, that use restriction stays with the land, and it is, and Fox Rock is subject to that today. The use restriction also has attached to it as part of the deed a right of reverter. That right of reverter gives a city, if the use restriction is no longer being properly used, that right to take back this property. And that use, use restriction has a value. It has a negative impact on the value of the property, and the release of the use restriction will have a positive impact upon the value of the property. The difference in valuable, in value is measurable and can be appraised by professionals. To our knowledge, the value of the use restriction has never been determined by a qualified real estate appraisal. I don't believe it was appraised when the taking, when the tolling agreement was executed by this administration back in December of 2016, nor do I believe it was appraised at the time, at this time, for your consideration of what the value of that use restriction is today. The amended and restated tolling agreement, as I mentioned, was entered in 20, in 2016. The tolling agreement acknowledges that the use restriction is in place, and it also acknowledges that it's an interest in land. For the toll, for the tolling agreement specifically cited the requirement that that tolling agreement come before this body. And it was under Chapter 40, Section 615, that it is required to come under, to this body first, before the sign, before the agreement is actually signed by the mayor. That is this party, under Chapter 40, Section 15, that must authorize the sale first and must set a minimum price. That has never been done. And for that reason, the tolling agreement is not appropriate at, for this party to consider as being incorporated into the LDA. Secondly, the tolling agreement failed to comply with the Uniform Procurement Act. Again, this is an interest in law, and I provided you in the handout with information with respect to the original home rule petition, the deed that made the restriction, and the Chapter 40, Section 15, and Chapter 30B, the procurement statute, Section 16. This is an interest in land. The Inspector General's Office Manual states that it would be inspect, an interest in land. And most especially, you can see that it is an interest in land, because that interest in land has a value that is, has negative impact on the Ross lot. And you are considering the purchase price for that Ross lot to be negatively impacted by the restrictions that you're placing as part of this land disposition agreement. So for those reasons, we think it is best to, in order to secure the benefit of the LDA for the downtown, to separate the 114 Whitwell Street property from the downtown's development. And in order to do that, we have provided you with a draft amendment, and we wish, we wish you to consider that, and we wish for you to favorably approve.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. In opposition?
My name is Rohit Podar. I live at 152 Whitwell Street. I yield my time to the next speaker.
My name is Ted Mulrain, president of HHNA. I live at 101 Monroe Road. To conclude our comments on behalf of the association, it's been stated that the tolling agreement is an integral part of what has been described in 2016 as a three-way agreement involving Fox Rock, Stewart, and the city of Quincy. And indeed, it provided a developer the flexibility to explore potential uses for both 114 Whitwell and the Ross lot, engaging potential medical providers accordingly. Now, Fox Rock has proposed a medical office building on the Ross lot. At the same time, Fox Rock and the city have determined that 114 Whitwell is not suitable for major medical uses. Therefore, the city council should be able to consider the merits of the Ross lot development separate from any non-medical proposal for up the hill. We feel the LDA needlessly conflates the termination of the use restriction and the right of reverter with the sale of the downtown parcel. No other project within the Quincy Center URDP is linked to a neighborhood in this way. It also puts the city council in a position of having to choose between, on one hand, supporting a development downtown, and on the other, tacitly approving a plan for an apartment complex of immense size in the middle of a neighborhood of single and multi-family homes. Above all, it is in the interest of all parties, city, developer, medical tenants, and neighbors, that the use restriction and the right of reverter be disposed responsibly and transparently. HHNA recommends an amendment to the Ross LDA that separates consideration of the use restriction from the right of reverter, and the right of reverter from the LDA. This evening, we have provided you the text of a suggested amendment. We ask the city council, the mayor, and Fox Rock to consider this proposal not only for the benefit of our Hospital Hill neighbors, but also for the benefit of the Ross lot proposal. By separating the two elements, the Ross LDA can go forward without any legal entanglements, which would otherwise encumber the downtown development. Finally, this proposal also provides the city council the best path to advocate for our Hospital Hill neighbors. We ask that you support our neighbors, many of whom are here tonight, along with all those in the city who respect good governance when it comes to the sale of city-owned real estate interests. Thank you.
Any of those speaking in opposition? Could you bring the mic? Thank you.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. You're welcome. I am not here. I'm Norma Simon Fitzgerald. I live in North Quincy. Do you need an address?
Sure, please.
124 East Quantum Street in Quincy. I'm not here necessarily in opposition, but I do think it's important for me to say what I've been finding out about. Letting go, obviously, we don't have a hospital anymore, and I know that this project is planning to build medical facilities, but they, as far as I can tell, are not an urgent care center, but really offices for private doctors. So already in Quincy, we do have Atria's Health, Harvard Vanguard, we have Granite, and we have a number of other facilities and private doctors. I was recently at the ER at Milton Hospital, and a staff member there told me that they actually are a very small hospital, and they do not offer a number of services, including a trauma center for disasters. So basically, what I read was that there's one hospital on the South Shore, and that is the South Shore Hospital that's available for the city of Quincy, 90,000 people, and others, others on the South Shore. It's the only verified and designated Level 2 trauma center south of Boston, including the Cape and Islands. So for somebody, unfortunately, who has used the ER a few times, and other people have as well, I just thought it's important to keep that in mind when you think about what kind of medical facilities we really need here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comments in opposition?
I'm sorry, I'm taller than the last individual. I've issued imposed a two-minute time limit. I've, I've e-copied you my comments in advance, and you're just going to have to suffer what I penciled together with a quick recap overview. At the same time, I must note it is unconscionable to limit individual comments to a mere two minutes. I sat through the last hearing on this matter for four and a half hours a couple of weeks ago, and fair is only fair. Two minutes is not fair. Three, four, five, maybe. In any event, the fundamental problem with what's proposed and has been done for downtown so far is that the rule of thumb is $3 of new private, new growth development for each, to cover each dollar of infrastructure spent in support of that development and cover increased local services costs arising from that development. The current ratio for Quincy Center is hanging around about 1 to 1. And given the asked, the $61 million ask and the considerable tax break abatement that's been proposed, you're going to fall below that. I know that some of the assessments of surrounding areas are going to go up, but 1 to 1 to 3 to 1, you're not going to get there. The only thing that has kept things from hitting the fan is that currently you're allowed to issue debt by the special powers enacted on the URDP, to issue debt for 10 years at interest only. In year 11, however, each block of that debt goes up interest costs five-fold because you have to pay PNI. People can say what they want and say, think what they're looking. Things are going to start hitting the fan in 2028 when $140, $150 million is going to go to PNI.
Thank you, Mr. Zamzo.
Thank you. And again, two minutes is not enough for problematic agreement.
Thank you. In opposition?
Hi, my name is Dan Gillis, 46 Heritage Road. I support the Hospital Hill Neighborhood Association and their position on separating the LDA from 114 Whitwell. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other further comments in opposition? If you didn't get a chance to speak tonight, but you'd like to be recorded in favor or in opposition of this land disposition agreement, there is a sign-in sheet in the back of this room. We'll conclude this portion of the meeting now at 7:13. Thank you. Good evening. It's now 7:30. We're going to get into the Joint Meeting for Finance and Downtown Economic Development Committee. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Crowell, Counselor Debona, Counselor Harris, Counselor Hughes, Counselor Liang, Counselor Mahoney, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Palmucci, Chairman King.
Present.
Eight members have called.
Thank you. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. So in light of the public comments that we just had, I'm going to recognize Counselor Hughes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, are we waiting, are we having a presentation this evening, or we're starting with discussion?
If you'd like, I thought we'd start with a quick discussion.
Okay. All right. All right. So at this moment, I just want to make a brief statement, and then I have to offer an amendment this evening. I want to begin the discussion tonight regarding the entanglement of both the 114 Whitwell site and the Ross Garage site, and talk about the neighborhood who's here this evening. And I had an opportunity to meet with the neighbors this weekend and discuss, after the last hearing, some of their concerns and some of the things that they are excited about in terms of this development, and some of the things that they want to get some clarity around and want to feel secure about their own neighborhoods. So first, I want to say that, and I think they, they expressed it this evening, as you heard from folks, that there was an expression that folks really do want to see the downtown move forward, and that folks up on President's Hill and Hospital Hill want to see development in the downtown. They're excited about the possibility of revitalizing our downtown, and in particular, this site. And that is certainly something that, that I share and that I am also in support of. But at this time, you know, I, I think it's important to explore options and to talk about some of the unease and uncomfortability and, and again, uncertainty that the neighbors expressed here tonight. So at this time, I would like to offer an amendment to Council Order 2019-041, and that would be the amendment that was passed out from the Hospital Hill Neighborhood Association. And I am happy to read it into the record, or I could waive the reading at this point. I think, I believe every counselor has it. Okay, great. So I would make a motion to put forth this amendment at this time. And again, just to reiterate, I believe the neighborhood is in support of not only revitalizing the downtown, but also doing something meaningful and bringing some real vitality and use to our city, particularly on this site. But again, just a real unease and uncomfortability with the entanglement that this particular LDA brings for, for the 114 Whitwell property.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to second the motion to amend the LDA by Counselor Hughes, and I support the sentiment that she's expressed, that the neighbors have expressed tonight during the public, public comment period. The Quincy Medical Site in the, in the downtown, the LDA should really have never been entangled to begin with. It really, it mixes two separate and distinct projects without adding any real benefit that I can tell to the city. And I agree that the, I agree with the sentiment of the, of the amendment itself, that the reverter and the LDA should be separate moving forward. However, I just, Counselor Hughes perhaps, and maybe the rest of the body, I, I wouldn't be comfortable voting on this tonight. This is something that, as many of you know, I sent a letter as chairman of the Oversight Committee a couple of months ago to Fox Rock, seeking more information about the tolling agreement, and I've been working with the administration and our attorney, Counselor Shea. I think there are a handful of other legal issues at play between removing the reverter clause and what that would mean to the medical site, as well as what that means to the downtown project. I just, and I'm, I'm not comfortable with voting on this tonight. I think there's too many unknowns that we really need to wrap our hands around with before we, before we vote on it. I wouldn't want something to occur, we take an action that has some sort of unintended consequence that then is difficult to back out of. So again, the entirety of both these housing plans, both at the medical site as well as downtown, haven't really been made fully clear to this body through this process yet. I'm expecting that we'll get some more of that information tonight from Fox Rock in their presentation. But I'd like to discuss this more, and I'd like to learn more from all the parties involved as we go forward. So I would respectfully request that we table this for tonight. We, we accept it in, it's tabled, so it'll be maintained that the amendment is offered. And then when we get to a point when amendments are being made by the administration or by counselors, we could revisit this and maybe have a little bit clearer understanding of what the impact would be. That would be my request, if we could not vote on it tonight for those reasons.
Yeah, that's fine. I think also we're still waiting for a number of follow-up items from... I think also, we're still waiting for a number of follow-up items from the last committee meeting, which was, you know, three weeks ago now. So, I don't think we anticipated voting on that tonight, and I'm happy to entertain this amendment to the LDA. Are there any other comments from councillors on this motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Could I ask, I'm asking that it be tabled?
Oh, so no vote on the amendment?
Yeah, I don't wanna vote on the amendment.
Okay, all right.
I'm asking that it be tabled.
Yeah, okay, so accepted as tabled. All right. All right, that being the case, I'll invite Mr. Giri to come up and start the presentation.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the members of the committee. I will be very brief this evening, as I said in my memorandum to the members of the committee late Friday. This evening will be the opportunity for the Fox Rock team to present the project as proposed. As I said in my memorandum on Friday, I am working assiduously with the City Council's legal counsel, Mr. Jim Shea. We've had a number of meetings, a number of conference calls. We're working together cooperatively to clarify and simplify the LDA, and an effort to protect the interests of the city, of course, and be fair to Fox Rock as the party that we're negotiating with. And so, I will introduce Mr. Chris Reel, who's the managing partner for Fox Rock, and he in turn will introduce his team. We will all remain, both city team as well as the Fox Rock team, available after their presentation to answer questions that the council may have. So, with that, I'll ask Mr. Reel to step to the microphone, put his mouth close to the microphone. If the sound system should fail, I understand this microphone is now operational. However, if everyone can hear, if you speak close to the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giri.
Chris Reel from Fox Rock Properties, thank you very much for the time. Make a brief presentation. We have members of the Fox Rock team here, as well as CBT, who we engaged early on in this process for urban planning, and part of the models here, and then they also have some additional slides. I'd just like to, you know, take a step back for a second. I know the last hearing we had on this was very helpful for us in terms of hearing your feedback, trying to answer your questions, having some follow-up with the mayor's office on improving the plan, and really wanna take this brief opportunity to maybe take a step back and see how we got here, and how this all came to light from our perspective. So, a brief history on Fox Rock Properties, which I think is just instructive to how we came to take this opportunity and frankly, challenge on. So, Fox Rock has been around for a little over 10 years, based in Quincy, but have only developed and owned on the South Shore. And that has largely been medical office and office, which has not included any residential. And part of the thinking there was, long-term owners, we manage every property that we own. At this point, I believe it's 23 properties, and we've sold one, it was a smaller asset. But we really have prided ourselves on developing assets, redeveloping assets, owning them, managing them ourselves, and becoming invested in them. So, our lens that we viewed what was going on in Quincy was a very fantastic urban development opportunity downtown. We were watching what was going on with Streetworks, and saw all the investment that the city had made, saw the leadership in terms of investing in infrastructure, which I know is not always easy. And we were sitting back, you know, wondering how we fit into that process, if at all. And what we were hearing from medical providers at the time, some of whom are tenants, was that there was a real interest to enter the Quincy market, but there was not an apparent real estate solution. And that's really where we came in. And so, we have a, when we own these properties and we manage them, we really try to be invested in the community. That had been the case previously before we took this on. We've accelerated that a little bit. We look forward to increasing our participation in some of these community organizations and working with the city. So, I appreciate a lot of the sentiment about how these two properties tie together, 114 Whitwell and downtown. And what we knew at the time was, there were three providers that we had talked to that wanted to be in Quincy. There was, Stewart was marketing actively the 114 Whitwell site for redevelopment. And it created a number of challenges to the medical community as to what the future reuse was gonna be up there. And we saw the downtown site, we had a meeting with some folks from the city, and viewed that as a fantastic location for medical, for a lot of the reasons that I think CBT will get into, in terms of visibility and access off the bridge. So, we intently focused on that, and every time we were working on that, or working through that, or talking to our potential future partners, the 114 Whitwell site came up. And so, we engaged in discussions about acquiring that, and there were issues about the reverter, there were issues about the future reuse of it, and we came to the conclusion that there was no way for us to proactively address the situation without making a massive investment, both in terms of acquiring the property, and also of our time and our reputation. It was not an issue that we took on lightly, and we knew that to do this, we'd have to dive head in. So, when we took this on, and you can see that memorialized in the amendment restating tolling agreement, I won't reiterate that, but happy to answer any questions after. The first order of business for us was addressing any potential medical reuse at the hospital site. That naturally started with an adaptive reuse of the hospital. And what you're seeing here is a partial reuse, 150,000 square feet of the existing hospital, with some residential units alongside of that. That's roughly a rendering. That would be an inpatient facility. It's a use that we considered quite a bit, even before we bought the property. That, from our standpoint, was achievable, challenging, but we felt presented some challenges to the neighborhood, and did not think it was the immediate type of transformative medical use that we signed up for. Secondly, we had a tenant that we had a relationship with that we, that had asked about a fully-built new hospital at the site. And what you're seeing here was a presentation that we gave to their board. This was prior to advancing anything down at the Ross Lot. This is a roughly 350,000-square-foot hospital, includes a six-story parking garage, and has 2,100 parking spaces. And when we looked at the traffic, and we looked at the issues that had happened when the hospital was fully operational, it's a significant impact on the neighborhood. This is a sizable investment, and effectively, what we were looking at was starting anew. And if you were gonna start anew, and I think, I hope, some of the folks from the Hospital Hill Neighborhood Association would appreciate this, you wouldn't put it there. And so, that was dismissed as an option for all those reasons. Now, the benefit of that is, I think we got some quick answers, given our relationship with some of these providers, and our attention quickly focused on what we could do downtown, because that was clearly the future home of the type of medical providers and facility that we wanted to develop. Now, what you're seeing in the yellow was the entire quote-unquote Ross Lot. It's referenced in a few documents, including the amendment restating tolling agreement. We spent the first six months diligencing that site. What I'll say about the work that Streetworks did, it was quite extensive. They had studies on this, so we were able to get up to speed very quickly, hire additional consultants to confirm that. And what is outlined in blue are the two additional investments that we made, and part of the, there's certainly some very great opportunities with this site, fantastic site for medical. There are some significant challenges, which I think the CBT team can get into a little bit. One initial challenge was the need to make further private investment to assemble this site. And once again, that was a critical juncture for us as an organization. We believed quite a bit in our ability to deliver medical care in Quincy and find the right providers, and so we decided to make those additional investments, which has led us to this point with Brigham and South Shore. So, just as a recap, you know, very briefly, I think instructive, we took this on in December 2016, quickly got to work on some of those initiatives I discussed. That was largely looking at potential reuses of the 114 Whitwell site for medical. Then we made additional investments downtown, and I think importantly here, and particularly related to some of the issues about entangling these sites, I think what was very productive for us, and has been very productive, in advancing the 114 Whitwell site plan to provide that certainty about what's gonna be up there, was the zoning amendment that was passed here. I think that did two things. I think that enabled councilors to speak out for or against the project, and enabled us to take on these planning issues with the neighborhood. We submitted a plan last year that I think failed in many respects. Counselor Hughes brought that up at the last meeting, and we took the criticism and the feedback to heart. And we have brought on CBT for that project as well. We made many iterations to that plan, and I think the planning issues that have to occur there are ones that are surmountable, are ones that we have made a good faith effort to work with the neighborhood on. But most importantly, the reason that we have advanced that plan while at the same time taking on this medical development, is to provide the clarity of what the future reuse is gonna be there. It's very difficult to develop a medical site with any provider. It's a significant investment of our money, their money, and having a vacant hospital with an uncertain use is very, very challenging, and I think, happy to get into the tolling agreement, but that's certainly set the stage for why we are able to be here today with Brigham and South Shore having publicly announced coming downtown. So, that has been a fruitful dialogue with them, and justified the significant investment we made upfront. And so, lastly, and I will turn it over to Keyshore at CBT, I just wanted to point out, what you see here, what we're calling north of the bridge, this is the new General's Bridge, is our proposed development, and Keyshore will speak a little bit about what that entails. But I did wanna point out, what we did include, south of the bridge, is a potential reuse of those parcels, including the Messina parcel that the city now owns. That shows a new public parking garage, and then a roughly 500,000-square-foot commercial building. And I think the great thing about the LDA, and what we were able to work out with the mayor's office, which I hope you consider, is we are certainly thinking about this development from north of the bridge, which is our immediate task. But I think the mayor's office and Fox Rock try to be very cognizant of the rest of the development that could follow on to this, because it is a critical element of why we're able to make this investment and able to proceed. I think it's a phenomenal plan, a lot of it from Streetworks, a lot of it from the city, not our plan, but there is a real vibrancy downtown that I think is attractive for medical providers. We wanna help be a solution to that. We're one party, but we think that this development certainly is a step in the right direction, and I think Keyshore can speak a little bit more to how we're thinking about it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council. My name is Keyshore Varanasi. I'm a principal at CBT. We're a Boston-based design firm. Locally, we designed the Thomas Crane Library Edition, very proud of it. Happy to be back and look at some of the projects again in Quincy. Great transformation that has been spoken about over the past hour or so. As we thought about the Ross Parcel site, it's a very unique site. Each site is very different for us. We don't necessarily bring the same recipe for each site, as you saw from the Crane Library. It's a very specific response to a historic building in Quincy, and we see very much the same. There is something very specific and unique for the Ross Parcel site and any other site that we would work on. So, I'll now walk you through some of the planning and design considerations. Obviously, what's on the screen is an overall plan. When we started looking at these three sites, we said we really need to look at the overall plan first, and then sort of pare back and look at the pieces. We can't look at individual pieces, because you're gonna be compromising a future potential. So, one of the, I apologize, the plan is a little small on the screen. Unique qualities is obviously the three parcels we're looking at under the LDA, which are close to the Granite Street, are very close to some of the great work that's been done here, and the transit station, obviously. The site also happens to be one layer behind what's a wonderful piece of the city, which is the Hancock Street. So, the site is somewhat landlocked. You can't really see it, you can't experience it. Also, on the other side is, obviously, you have the railroads. So, one of the opportunities and challenges is, how do you really preserve and stabilize and enhance Hancock Street, because you can't recreate that kind of a vibe and the grit that already you have, but build something really unique behind it, and really connect it back to Hancock Street and to the downtown here. So, one of the early recommendations we made to Fox Rock was to really find a number of ways to get from Hancock Street to the back of the project. These are some of the great examples from around the world of alleyways that actually activate those connections. One of the early steps was taken by Fox Rock right next to 1495. It is, again, it's still an early step, but you can actually see the potential of it. By looking at some of these photographs, we actually see more than one opportunity linking Hancock Street to the Ross Parcel in the back. We then also see an opportunity to create a real place. When you're thinking about multiple buildings, office tenants, we need to create a place in the back. This Ross Parcel Way can be a back door. We need to create a very special sense of place. So, we are looking to create a great courtyard and a space that acts as a complement to downtown and Hancock Street as well. This is a picture, actually, we found out, we sort of, from the archives in the top left, which is the rear side of the Hancock Street, which used to be, which is the Ross Way. So, we're trying to see the back as not being the back of the existing buildings as well, trying to see in the fullness of time, maybe there's a way to re-energize that side across the street, complementing with the development, with the plaza and some open space, as well as some active uses on the ground floor, and of course, a mix of uses on the top. So, what you're looking at on the screen now, as we call it, as A, B, and C parcels. This is a wedge-shaped parcel. On the top, you see Granite Street, which is a very narrow end of the parcel. Right-hand side, you see the Hancock Street parcels and the existing buildings. And you have the left-hand side, you have the railroad. At the bottom of C is where the new General's Bridge is coming through. So, what's nice about that configuration is, where you have the most widest footprint, is where we are able to locate the medical office building. These buildings tend to have larger footprints. They require more flexible space, so we took advantage of the wider swath of the parcel. And then as we move progressively to the north, we have a hotel in parcel B, and we have a residential building in parcel A, where the site gets narrower. But we're also very interested in creating a grand plaza in between the backside of the Hancock Street buildings, and in the forecourt of these buildings as well, which is represented here. Once again, you see the General's Bridge, the medical office building as it is proposed here, and then you have the hotel building and the residential building with a number of active uses on the ground floor. The medical office building itself is a nine-story building. It sits on a four-story podium garage that supplies some parking for the building, but also has active uses up on top for the medical office. So, in early days, the idea is that that building within its garage, which is shown in the gray in the back at the bottom of the building, four levels of parking, will supply some amount of parking for the medical office use, while rest of the site can provide the additional parking that is needed for the medical office. And we have the six floors of medical office sitting on top, approximately 200,000 square feet. While we have a garage in the podium, we would like to see the ground floors as being active, that you don't see the cars at the ground floors on the plaza. You do see retail uses on the ground floor. This is the full plan, including the hotel in parcel B. Again, hotel being 150 key, 140, 150 key, being low-rise, providing that sort of break enassing, so the medical office buildings can sit next to it. And as you come close to Granite Street and stop and shop, where you see more of the gateway, sort of a residential building, which is a 15-story tall residential building. So, the massing is arranged away from Hancock Street, and again, arranged as a series of taller volumes and the lower volumes, separating from each other to create the kind of the skyline that is needed for the buildings to breathe and have the views and natural light. So ultimately, again, as Chris pointed out, the idea is not just to build buildings, to really reinforce the... really reinforce the beauty of the fabric that is there, which is the Hancock Street, not to turn our back on it, but make connections from it, but also as a complement, create better uses, also a great set of ground floor uses, and courtyard and retail in the back, above which you'll see the medical office, hotel and residential, trying to bring more of an 187 life to this part of the downtown. Thank you.
Any questions so far for the developer or the architect?
Counselor Boll. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second to the last slide that you just had there, this is a great proposal for the city of Quincy and the downtown. If you can maybe put that back up on the screen, second to the last one.
Live, work, play.
Yes, live, work, play. That's huge. You have some, next.
Slightly rearranged the slides, and in order to reduce the redundancy, we used these slides.
That's okay. Just to describe what Quincy Center or the downtown is supposed to be like, what the Street Works envisioned some five years ago, was a lot of the things that you have in here, which is food hall, outdoor movie screening, concert, farmer's market, winter garden, cafe, restaurant, seating, fitness, art in the park. This is all the stuff that was kinda, which my colleague from Ward Four would always talk about, the arts of the downtown. This is huge. This is what the folks have been envisioning to happen in the downtown by constructing your 200,000 square feet of medical use. You're also envisioning, I think this is going to be called McConville Way, on the back end of what you talked about Hancock, Hancock Street or the Hancock Street corridor. And we talked about this when we had the blighted property owners come in here, and I spoke about it, it's visioning to cut some of that, cut the whole lease, maybe cut it in half and have the back end that you just spoke about on the McConville Way, where you're going to propose to put the hotel and the 110 units of workforce housing on that back end of there, is envisioning a fane hall or some type of area that people can walk into and enjoy some of the arts that the folks of the city of Quincy can enjoy. I know that a lot of people came in here today and spoke in favor of this new medical use to start the process of doing the construction on the Ross Lot, but this is exactly what the folks of Quincy are looking to envision. Talking to Chris Reel about his envision of arcades, bowling alleys, things for children to enjoy, things for families to enjoy, things for seniors that can go down into the downtown. We have 125 Granite, 99 Granite, which are directly really across the street. There's a lot of senior housing around the area that they can come down. I see chess pieces here. This is all stuff that the folks from the city of Quincy can enjoy as well as the development happening. So it's an all-inclusive, everybody can use it, everybody can come to the downtown. A lot of the folks that live here in the city want to know what the benefit it is for them, and this is the benefit that I'm seeing. This is the first time I've seen this type of, you know, design, this whole time we've been debating here on Fox Rock End. This is a very good model that you have here, that you have in this packet. I just want to commend you on that, because this is what the folks at Quincy have been looking for. What's in it for the citizens? What is it for the residents of Quincy? Am I going to bring my children up to downtown and look at the apartments of the condos? And I want to be able to envision this and be able to enjoy this for all the folks of Quincy. So this is a very integral part of the development that you guys want to propose with Fox Rock. The start of this, the leap of faith, with Tim Cahill said earlier, that we have to digest and take that the leap of faith, that you're going to do the things that are written here, because that's the optimism that I have, that you're going to do for the city. But it's been something that's been debated about down, up here at the council, is what is it for the folks of the city of Quincy? What about the residents here? What are they going to, what are they going to benefit from all this construction and traffic and concerns? I know there's a fellow who came in earlier, talked about, he just bought a condo at Clifton Place, the Galvin Building, and he said, just a little bit of construction, but I see the light at the end of the tunnel that things are starting to evolve in downtown. So I just wanted to say a comment, this slide right here, kind of caught my eye, the old backside of child world in those dwellings, but this is what the folks at Quincy have been, they want, they want this. This is what they've been asking about. I know we had a meeting about the Walson Center area and the revitalization over there as well, but the folks also want to envision this as well. So just a comment, I want to listen to the rest of the council members here on how they feel about different things. I know my colleague from Ward Four is going to speak and see what he has to say, but other than that, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Just thanks for the comments. I think one of the nice things is that the street can also be shut down at evenings, at nights, and weekends, and you can actually make the entire space work as a great public space behind the Hancock Street and the buildings. So we see a lot of opportunities that are pointed out. Unfortunately, in the interest of time, we ended up eliminating the wrong slide, but you picked up on the right side. Thank you.
Counselor Palmucci.
Thank you. I don't know if you saw me raise my hand, or are you just assuming that I couldn't go a night without speaking? Can I get Chris? Can Chris come up? Good evening, Chris.
Good evening.
I've been waiting a long two years before you appear before the body and I get to ask you questions.
Likewise.
Yeah. Couple of things, I don't have my copy of the LDA in front of me, it's in my, finally coming, I'll grab it, but just to go through some of the overall stuff, right? So some of the overall pieces. So we're looking at the slide that's up, three buildings. First building, the big one, that's your medical office use, right?
Correct.
And as you go to the middle of the site, you have this, some green area, and then a smaller building, that's your hotel, right?
Yes.
And then this parking, what, underneath that green area?
Yes.
Okay. And then the next building is the residential building, right? The third building?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the residential, well, strike that, the medical building is spelled out in the LDA, right?
Yes.
All right. The hotel is spelled out in the LDA, right?
Yes.
The residential building is not at all spelled out in the LDA, right?
The ultimate mix and, you know, size of that is not spelled out in the LDA.
Okay. So I have a concern about that, and I think that I expressed that at some point, somewhere in the process here, either publicly or privately to you. I don't, you're a lawyer.
Yes.
I'm a lawyer. Bulgaria's lawyers, half the side of the room is lawyers. I don't understand, I guess, maybe you can explain it, right? But I don't understand why we, why in the LDA we're not solidifying what that is going to be, to the extent that we can. And I know that, I have some other issues at the LDA about how we're not solidifying the public parking portion, right, that the city would be responsible for, but I understand that we can, we can put in a, you know, a chart that covers what the future will be, and, you know, that'll work itself out. But with the housing, that's a, I mean, it's a small section of the site, but it's a big piece of the overall development. And the consultants at the city have, or has, has said that the land value, the entire Ross Lot, is zero, essentially, or thereabouts, right? And that was because the value of the medical use was zero, because it's not enough return on investment for anybody else other than you guys to do it, because you have a commitment to Quincy, you have a commitment to these other clients, and it's just, you know, this kind of perfect storm of a situation. So you guys are willing to do it, and the cost to that is that there's no value to the land. That's what the consultants tell us. But they also said that because you have this affordable housing component of the development, that also makes the value of the land zero, yet we don't have that solidified. So while I haven't made up my mind, because I haven't seen it yet, but I'm open to the possibility, so I'm open to the possibility that the medical, the medical use, the benefit we get from the medical use versus the market realities suggests that that land, you know, has no fixed cost to the developer. I buy into that, and then the hotel kind of goes with the medical. You can't get the medical use if you didn't do the hotel. So, okay, I'm with you there, but then when we get to the end of the site on the residential, I would be open to the idea that if this really is, you know, a very robust, affordable slash workforce housing development, which is so badly needed in the area, in the city of Quincy, I'd be open to that's got no value in terms of the asset in order to accomplish that as a policy goal. But without it being solidified in the LDA, it's kind of just like up in the air. So I can't get to zero in my head. I can't get to the zero value, because you're getting this great benefit, when the zero value is set in the LDA, but this benefit, this purported benefit that we would get isn't set in the LDA. So really long way of asking, what's up with that? Like, from you guys' perspective, if there is a reason, why isn't the residential spelled out in the LDA?
Yeah, thank you. And I think, based on your comments at the last meeting, we took a long, hard look at this, and I think, you know, we provided some numbers on the existing pro forma, but I think we do owe you some more on maybe what a market rate would look like, and we're working on that, and we'll get that to you. But I think, just very briefly, we didn't start this downtown with housing leading, we ended it with that, and what we looked at was, I think, one of the sides that Key Shore had was, you know, we had the medical office building, then we had this empty parking lot, and we said, hey, what could be accretive to this development, both for us and for the city? And that started with the hotel, because that's what the medical providers asked for. And then we looked at, we would not, so it's 196-unit building, which is 15 stories, so that's steel construction. So I don't think that we would necessarily jump into building that market rate. I think you mentioned perfect storm, and we looked at it and said, hey, there's a really good way to maybe work with the city here and provide a need downtown. So what we provided in the pro forma, and maybe why it's not spelled out, is I think there's a couple of things that we brought, is a willingness to do this at a lower rate of return, because we're already doing this development. And also, you know, for us, it's a long-term investment, and that, you know, that has a value for us in being able to keep it filled and have people there, as opposed to just luxury residential. The site's being built with no parking, that's dedicated just to the residential, it's sharing it with the medical. I think that could work really nicely, or planners do. So I guess what I'd say is, we'd love to nail some of that down before we finalize the LDA. I think it is mutually beneficial, I think it helps us clarify it. What we provided was a minimally subsidized project, where we said, okay, we have a desire to do more residential in the city, and there's an affordable housing contribution to that, which we're going through an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which we could absolutely do, but I think the difference is, that may not get built, and so this could be an opportunity to build it. And so instead of it just accumulating in a trust fund, it builds up. Now, the rest of the projects, that's only, say, roughly 50, 60 units as we try to divide it up, the rest of the project is not really subsidized. There's a state program, which I think, you know, I know you're probably more familiar with that than I am, that provides $100,000
Mass housing.
Mass housing grant for, you know, workforce housing, as the state defines it. Everything above that, now, we're modeling out as market rate. And as you correctly pointed out, market rate and workforce housing are pretty similar in Quincy, and so I think we don't want to build something that you have to go through all these income verification issues, and we're not really providing a discount. So I think something like the Watson, which you mentioned last time, kind of diving into that and saying, how can we make this better? How can we improve it? Because I think on that one issue, our interests are aligned, to ensure that it's actually a competitive product that folks will live in and will become a vital part of the downtown.
So I appreciate that, and that's my understanding of it. So it's, when you're talking about your, just to set the table a little bit, when you're talking about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, it says, anybody who builds more than 10 units in the city of Quincy has to build one, one per 10 units, let's strike that, for every 10 units you build in the city, you have to build one unit of affordable housing. That's the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance. So, yeah, this is where we're kind of entangling some different parts here, but so if you were going to build 500 units at Quincy Medical Site, you would have an obligation to the city, either to, and the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance allows you to either pay into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, managed by the city and, it's a trust, so it's managed by the trust, the trustees. You can either pay into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, or you can build the units on-site or somewhere else. So you're suggesting, if you guys were to build, build out Quincy Medical Site, 500 units, you would owe 50 units to the city under the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance? So you would put the 50 units, you said it's 140 units?
196.
196. So you'd put 50 of those, the affordable housing units that you essentially owe, you'd put them in this building?
Yes.
To meet that obligation? Okay, great. I think, you know, not suggesting, I'm in support of 500 units on Hospital Hill, but I'm suggesting that affordable housing makes more sense downtown than it would in Hospital Hill, whatever the number ends up being. I like that. I think the, I, for me personally, I think it should be a policy goal that we have housing in our downtown that is affordable to both the doctor and the janitor, right, and everybody in between, you know, the nurse, the firefighter, the police officer. So this, that would certainly help with that. However, this was a discussion I was having with your Harvard professor there, that you already owe, that wasn't meant to be insulting, I don't remember his name, you owe that 50, right? So that 50 is, however you're going to pay it, whether it's you pay into the fund, you build it elsewhere, you build it on-site, you owe the city 50 units. So you take that 50 units, you know, separate it, you get 146 units left. So really, when we're talking about whether or not the land has no value, because we're going to get something, I separate that 50 units, because we're already getting that 50 units or the like value somewhere else. So then we're talking about the 146 units. Now, if you tell me we're going to do some sort, that you intend to do some sort of mix of affordable and/or workforce and/or market rate of that 146, then I'm seeing some benefit to it. But if it's going to be 50 units to cover your affordable housing contribution, which you owe the city no matter what, and then 146 units that are market rate, that's fine. I'm okay with that, because I still, I'm supportive of the 50 units downtown, and I have no problem with people who build market rate. But for me, on behalf of the taxpayers of Quincy, there then is not such a benefit to the community for you to do that particular project on that particular site, that I would say that that land has zero value. I would need someone to prove to me that that land has zero value at that point. You know what I mean?
Yes.
Okay. But is that the current intention? So if you separate that 50-unit obligation, that you would do 146-unit market rate, or you still playing with the numbers?
We would like not to do that. I think if this turned out at the end of this process and before we sign the LDA, that the intent of the city and this body is to maximize the value of the land, you know, I think that's best taken on by another developer. I think what I think we could bring to the table as part of this is trying to solve this issue by creatively working together on what the subsidies would be and what that income mix would look like. I don't think that a 15-story unrestricted market rate project, sharing a site with those doctors that you mentioned, the nurses, the janitors, adds anything to the site for us. So I wouldn't, I would not, that would be a bad result. I think, I think this was an intention to say, what is the cost to do it? So we vetted that out, and yes, we're bringing a subsidy from another development, which is a part of it. There are other ways to look at subsidies. I don't know what the, and I think I look forward to kind of working out what that mix should be, and it's a unique opportunity to try to solve something, and if it, you know, if it doesn't work out and there's not a way to do it, I think we would let that part of the project go and focus on the medical office building and the hotel.
And then, so the LDA, if an agreement or a mutual objective wasn't able to be reached for that piece of the parcel, the LDA would reflect that perhaps that would go to somebody else?
I think that would be a fair way to leave it.
I mean, I think that's a good way to look at it. I mean, that's kind of the way I'm looking at it and approaching it. Like, if we can get to something that works for you guys, but also works for the city and adds some real value, then yeah, let's do it. To your comment- To your comment, if our goal is to maximize the value of the land, it's probably better for another developer. I would only suggest that, I'm not indicating that the goal or the policy objective here, my perspective on this is to maximize the monetary value of the land, right? There's all sorts of ways, just as we're seeing with the medical use. It's not about, okay, well, what's the most money we can squeeze out of you guys to get this land? It's what can we do that's best for the city long-term in growing the downtown and growing the tax base in the downtown? So it can be that economic engine that drives the city forward, and then residential taxpayers can have their load lightened, right? Or, and/or, the additional revenue that comes from the downtown goes towards, you know, more improvements in the neighborhoods, right? Going back to the, what does the typical Quincy resident get as a benefit from the downtown project? So maximizing the value of the land is not a monetary discussion alone. I'm okay with a zero value on the land if the benefit warrants a zero value on the land. I mean, it's a proportional, it's not a binary yes or no, it's a proportional. So I'm more than happy to continue that discussion with you guys. I think you have numbers to crunch. I'll certainly, next time we have Pam McKinney and others up here, kind of pick their brain about it as well, as to what the value of the land is if it was just going to be a straight development, right? I mean, this body has some experience with the O'Connell project, that essentially, that was, that was zero-dollar land. We get the benefit of a public park, and that's not affordable. There's no affordable component that I'm aware of in that project. But the parking, right? That, the parking that's contemplated in this design underneath, next to the hotel, is that the public-built parking, or is that going to be your parking?
The parking in the medical building?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the parking that's sited within the medical building will be for the users, so for Brigham and South Shore.
Okay.
So that's parked at roughly half of their requirement. So I think when I was, and that's the biggest driver of the rent, so I think, you know, the pro forma kind of reflects, we're trying to solve a moving target variable. And I think when this kind of really got unlocked was utilizing, you know, south of the bridge, including the Messina Lot for that interim parking, because, you know, typically, I think, the commercial lags a little bit from an urban planning standpoint. And so we would be overdeveloping parking now, and I think the way the LDA is structured, and you raised another great point in the last meeting, in terms of trying to nail down what the parking payments are, that again is something that is a protection for us as well, and would love to do that before we finalize the LDA. But I think really puts us in a position, along with the city, to find a solution for a standalone parking structure that cannot serve just this development, but future developments as well. And so that, from a planning standpoint, was really the biggest driver in the cost, and really was able, you know, to get us to get Brigham and South Shore down here to publicly announce this.
So the industry standard for medical office space is four to six spaces per 1,000 square feet?
Yeah, I think.
And what are you guys at?
We're at four per 1,000. When we have done these deals in the suburbs, you know, it's, I think the conversation starts at six. That's kind of where we're at initially. I think if you go to Foxborough, similar program, that's a little bit more towards six. You know, the city certainly, through this process, is bringing a lot to the table. You know, we're trying to bring a lot to the table in terms of getting inside the, and I think the medical providers as well are buying into this vision of an urban area that looks a little bit more like their parking requirements in Boston than they do in the suburbs, which again is just another reason why we've prioritized things like the hotel, things like the retail, so that people, you know, it's tougher to get them to absorb all of the headaches of an urban infill development without any of the attendant benefits. And so that was, that is, that was the biggest part of the conversation, and I think dragged out the planning process to this a little bit longer than we would have liked.
So your parking, the parking that you're building next to, adjacent or under the hotel is two per 1,000?
So under the medical building is two per 1,000. There's shared parking under the hotel, and there's surface parking in and around the residential area.
So what do you get to, what do you get to when you combine both?
Overall, four per 1,000.
Okay, so you can self-park the medical yourself?
No, the four per 1,000 includes the interim surface parking.
Okay.
South of the bridge. And then that parking, so we own a small sliver of land south of the bridge, and it's identified in the LDA, so there's an assemblage that needs to happen south of the bridge in order to build a standalone public garage. So we would contribute that land to the city in order for the city or whomever to build a garage.
Right.
And then once that's built, we're able to consolidate a little bit of that parking, and I think that frees up the Messina Lot and then the other city-owned parcel there for future development.
I'm just trying to figure out what you're building for parking.
Two per 1,000.
Two per 1,000?
Yep.
And so the city would be responsible for the other two per 1,000?
Yes.
Okay. And you have no problem with the dynamics of the parking relationship and the cost being flushed out in the LDA, do you?
Oh, no, I think we need to, we need to do that, yeah.
All right, I think so as well. That was one of the things that I noted when I first reviewed it. Okay, the other, just going to hit the other three points that I have, and then give it back to some of my colleagues getting involved. Do you have a problem with a reverter clause on the land if you guys don't perform? If, as long as it gives you enough time to reasonably perform?
Yeah, I think the issues that were raised in the last meeting, the reverter clause being a principal one, the four years of when we have to do it, I think that, yeah, I think that was all feedback that was good for us to hear. And so I think in working with Mr. Gary and the city, it seems to us, a clearer way to do this is to condition our closing of the land on actually having a lease or our willingness to evidence our willingness to build this on spec for a medical provider. I think, hopefully, and we can, you know, work through that language and present it to you, those issues about, you know, what happens if we buy it and then don't build the medical building? What's this four years all about? I think those largely go away, and there's some nuances there, but we do not want to be in a position where, you know, all this is a proposal and a risk, and we feel confident about it. But we would not want to be in a position of owning a city lot and then having to unwind this in four years' time. Doesn't seem to be really beneficial to anyone. So I think hopefully that resolves some of the issues.
Okay, so that's being worked on, that language?
Yes.
Because obviously, it's not a situation where the city would give the land over to let you guys land bank it, to, you know, see what happens in the future. I mean, and I think that's a mutual, it's just not flushed out in the LDA, it's a mutual agreement. You guys don't want the land, if you're not going to be able to utilize it for what you're saying you're going to utilize it for, and we don't want to give it to you unless you're going to do it.
Right.
That language, I think we could tighten up. And then the four years versus seven years, that's not an issue? Or some sort of agreement? Because the tolling agreement says seven years.
Right.
The LDA says four years for the medical office building use. I would imagine your leases are going to be, you wouldn't want to be, you wouldn't want a four-year lease. It wouldn't.
Yeah, I think that, I think all that language is a little confusing. I think the intent in the four years was, you know, it assumed we bought it, and then we had four years where we had to pursue medical first. The tolling agreement issue was, a lease had to be at least seven years. So it just got convoluted, and I think, I hope, again, that issue will go away, because the four years is not an issue anymore in terms of our ability to execute, to build the medical.
All right, and then my last one, hitting the high points, was the definition of medical office building, that, you know, refers to the commercial space, and then that doesn't specifically say medical office space, right? So are you guys okay with tightening up that language to some degree?
Yes, I think, I think again, that needs to be further refined. I know we proposed some language, and I think we're just working through it to try to get that in there.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Chris. I may have some questions later on for you, but good for now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Kroll. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I don't know who, maybe Chris, start. I want to be cognizant of not recycling what we already, you know, talked about, but again, this is a deal that's been two years in the making, and it's been in front of us for maybe, what, a month and a half? So, you know, takes some time for folks, I'll speak for myself, takes time for folks like me to absorb what it is that's being contemplated. Obviously, we heard quite a bit of dialogue from the neighborhood. I know Council Hughes has been actively engaged, you know, with both, you know, your development team as well as the, you know, the residents that live up there. Is that an ongoing conversation, I would presume, with the folks that live in the actual neighborhood, in terms of what actually will end up there? And I only ask that because unfortunately, as presented, it is kind of intertwined.
Yes. So that, I think, we've had, you know, had a meeting last week, a meeting before that. I know the HHNA Site Committee has been very active, but in addition to that, you know, we met directly with the Butters. We've really tried to lean into that issue, as I mentioned. You know, we're not residential developers. This was not our intent to buy it and just immediately focus on residential. We looked at different uses. I think that issue being before the planning board, I think a lot of the issues there, you know, setbacks, height, unit count, traffic, are all issues that we're, you know, preparing and preparing to present to the planning board. And the idea is to file that in early May, and we hope to be on the agenda sometime in late May.
So that I'll basically take into consideration, updated version, if you will, that I would presume will probably look a little bit different in terms of density and setbacks and everything else that you had just kind of mentioned?
Yeah, I think our intent, absolutely, 100% different. I mean, the initial plan was lacking in many respects, you know, had some setback issues, had some height issues. Key Shore and his team took that over, and we tried to methodically go down and address each of the concerns that were raised for us. And I appreciate, you know, when you have a very well-organized neighborhood group, you're getting feedback that's pretty well consolidated. I think, you know, unit count and density are issues that have not yet been resolved, but in terms of setback, trying to be cognizant of the neighbors up there, we've tried very hard to continue to listen, and we'll continue to do that.
And I mean, I completely agree with you, being a lifelong resident as well, the, you know, the strength of the neighborhood groups is literally the lifeblood of the community. So as I jokingly say to people, if you want to know what's going on in the neighborhood, ask some people who live there, and, you know, they'll certainly tell you. And it sounds like they have, so hopefully, and it sounds like it is, being taken under some serious advisement. So again, I'm very cautious as a ward counselor not to, you know, get into other ward counselors' issues, but I realize now we're presented with a deal that, you know, has a tremendous amount of overlap, at least in my opinion. You know, a couple of the questions, you know, just reading, and I thought she was going to be here tonight, so I wasn't really sure of the format of the meeting till late Friday, so again, part of the educational process. One of the lead, I think she's an economist, Bill, is that right, Pam McKinney, right? She's, that's by title, by trade. And she had done kind of like a, you know, loose-leaf assessment, if you will, on all three-year projects. And I know that, and you had said it, or someone from your team had said it, that the margins were thin. And I think it was a range between 100 and 200, maybe even 300 basis point in the negative on each one of those projects. So I understand you had made a statement that you want to be, you want to be visible in the community, this is where you want to do this, but is the profit center of the hospital, is that where you ultimately make your money, even if you're long in these investments? I mean?
No, I mean, that's a, it's a, I think at least in the plan, and it's evolving, but the plan that we have, it's a good question, but the plan that we have at the hospital, it's an expensive construction. You know, we have a lot of underground parking, a lot of foundation work. Really, I think, and I read Pam McKinney's memo, and didn't sleep well that night, but I was comforted by the fact that I think what we are viewing downtown is a long-term investment, and that because of access to transit, great civic leadership that keeps investing downtown, you know, the retail component, that over time will be proven right. And as a follow-up on a conversation with Mr. Palmucci, there are certainly developers that could come in and build luxury housing better than we could. But I think what we are bringing to the table here is the long-term perspective. So when Pam McKinney's memo comes out, that's looking at, you know, maybe a merchant developer who needs to build to a certain yield, and needs to know that the market will pay more than what they're building it for. We would certainly like that to be the case here, but we're not looking at it on a two-to-five year horizon. We're looking at this as a, as a long-term investment that we're not going to sell.
So what's a typical break-even?
The typical break-even? Well, to get our money back on this? Well, I mean, so the deal for the medical building, for example, has a 7% return. So that's, we won't see a return on that money. Hopefully during my lifetime we will, but, you know, it's a low-yielding deal, but it's a tenant in Brigham and Women's, which we have a lot of confidence in as an organization, and feel it's worthy of the investment.
And you parking, just to kind of piggyback off of what Brian was saying, because this was my, one of the things that I really wanted to get a strong understanding before I left here this evening. Because again, as much as we talk about, you know, this deal specific, there's so many ancillary factors that come into this, falls outside of your scope, but now we're contemplating potentially an additional 10 takeout parcels, right? Which could potentially cost more money on the diff. We're contemplating the construction of an additional parking garage over in the Ross Lot, which obviously will be financed by the diff. Now, you had said something along the lines of, Chris, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so maybe you can clarify. Coming up with some sort of situation or deal with the city to create the parking that you can't self-park with your medical office, does that mean you guys would look to partner in financing a garage? Or is that the expectation from you, the applicant, that the city is going to finance the garage?
No, I think we're incentivized to practically work with the city and the state to get that garage built prior to the medical office building taking occupancy. So I think as you saw across the street, and talking with Lee Kennedy, you know, those garages generally go up pretty quick. So if we start now, it takes a little bit of time to build out a medical office building, the garage, if it's built, could catch up to the medical office building, because I think having a medical provider here that's seeing patients, that has staff, that's parking in a surface lot, and then that parking's displaced, and then there's a garage, and it just creates some challenges. But I think as of right now, what we're proposing is, you know, contributing the land that we own over there to try to facilitate the construction of that garage. Obviously, if we're not building it, and we would be a tenant there, we would have to pay for using those spaces. If it's more than that, we're open to the discussion, and I think that...
If it's above and beyond, because I'm just using your math, right? Basically, cut it in half, you can park 350, you need to find 350, right? Roughly 700 spaces? So you're saying if it were more than, if you needed more than 350, you would look at?
No, I think even just for the 350 spaces, I think the part of the conversation that we're having is having to lease those spaces from the city, similar to the deal across the street.
But your expectation is the city will fully finance the construction of that garage?
I know that that's what's being asked of you as part of the diff, and I think whether that's state money, or the city, or Foxtrot contributing a piece of it, I think that was a conversation we're expecting to have, as we all try to cooperatively work it out.
Right. So again, I think the 61 million, and Billy, you can shake your head, I think that actually authorized, actually, I could be wrong, there's money that may be appropriated for the design of the garage, is that in the 61 million?
Preliminary.
Preliminary design. So, Chris, again, the way my mind works, I'm not an attorney, so I go right to, you know, the math, and, you know, I'm contemplating a garage that we don't know how much it's going to, you know, cost above in addition to what we're already financing through the diff, right? So kind of falls outside of your purview, but I think Council Cane had mentioned that there is quite a bit of follow-up items, at least around the financial components, to, you know, help move towards the decision. I think it, I mean, I think it's great, you know, I've been sitting up here long enough, I think everybody, you know, wants to continue momentum downtown, no question there. But, you know, for me, the cost of pause is always, can we afford it? Because when we started this program back, I don't know, 10-plus years ago, it was always, would be fully self-supporting. So I think, you know, us, as well as, you know, the folks sitting here, want to continue to make this a fully self-supporting endeavor, and not make it become a burden of, you know, the general fund or the everyday taxpayer. When I looked at some of the, and it was a nice plan that CBT had put together, some of the streetscape and the arts, and, you know, sort of the synergies that they displayed... of the streetscape and the arts and, you know, sort of the synergies that they displayed. Is that part of your program, or is that part of the diff program, creating those outdoor urban spaces? And the reason I ask that is, my recollection, when we were over in the Hancock Lot, some of that programming was part of the diff financing. So who's paying for that?
So I know there's kind of two retail elements to that in the programming. As you're looking at the site, the partial, the part that falls in the new buildings that we're constructing, that's at our cost. And the retail and all the programming on the Hancock side, the existing buildings, is not factored into the cost of this project. Now, those are all owned by, by separate entities that hold those properties. But the onsite amenities, the art, that is...
The alleys and all those...
The alleys?
Items, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the alley that we...
Decorative.
Currently own, we light it up and put a mural on the side of it. It's been a great addition, I think. Love to see more of that. I'd love to see more of those properties, to Counselor DeBona's point, revitalized. We don't control those properties right now.
Of course, right.
But it's a huge element of this plan, is seeing that revitalized. I think the, you know, to Counselor DeBona's question of, you know, seeing that happen, I think having, you know, the number of visitors coming to this medical facility and the people that work there will expect to see that. They're buying into this as a revitalized urban property that has a vibrant streetscape. And so if that doesn't happen, particularly, we'll do our part for the part that we're building, and that's a big part of the plans here, it's factored into the costs that are presented to you. But for the rest of that property, that is absolutely critical to making this development work.
So, said another way, everything that we've seen in that slide deck is at the cost of Fox Rock properties?
Well, I mean, that's, there's a lot in the slide deck. Everything on the property that we're building, which you see there...
The outdoor urban spaces.
Is a part of the project costs for Fox Rock that are factored into these numbers.
So the outdoor urban spaces that we saw in the slide presentation, that's part of your program?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And financed by you?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mahoney?
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
So first I want to do, I want to clarify something. Counselor Palmucci was talking about a reverter, and that's specific to the Ross parking lot. I don't want to combine the two things, because we're talking about reverters and we're talking about a closet at Whitwell, and then we're talking about putting a reverter on Ross parking lot. Those are two separate entities completely. That language that we're talking about would strictly be just for the construction down in the Ross parking lot. So just want to put that out there, because we're combining a lot of conversations tonight. Because we started the conversation with the evening with potentially putting, taking language to separate the two. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, mostly for myself. And I don't, I don't believe, Counselor Palmucci was also saying that the hotel was part of the LDA. I don't think it is part of the LDA. So part of the problem I'm having hurdling over with the LDA is there's many things that I'm trying to piece together. But in the LDA itself, it specifically is speaking about the 200,000 square foot medical office building. And these other pieces are completely separate and not part of the LDA, but the vision is that they'll come once we build the medical office building. Is that correct?
I don't have the LDA in front of me. I believe it's contemplated in the LDA. It's a big part of what we're doing. It's a, it's a process that we've worked with Mr. Geary and our attorneys on what actually is spelled out in the LDA versus what is part of the certificate of consistency process with the Planning Board. But happy to, happy to clarify that.
Yeah, maybe Mr. Geary, is the hotel in the LDA?
The hotel in the LDA.
And what page, where could we really find it in the LDA? Yeah, it's, I don't see it. Well, it's your document, so...
Okay, well, it's, I'm being told it's not specifically described. We can clarify that language as part of the, as part of the revision.
I don't see it anywhere, but it does have to be clarified. So, because we're specifically talking about three things in this Ross parking lot, we're talking about a medical office building, a hotel, and workforce housing. And you made it very clear that if you, if it doesn't go in the direction that it's set forth with us tonight, that that would be something, workforce housing would be something that Fox Rock would pass on, correct?
No, I didn't say we'd pass on workforce housing. I said we would pass on luxury housing, if that was what was, if that was where this ended up.
Okay. So I'm going to go back to another conversation from, and maybe you can help, because I know when we were discussing the workforce housing, the 196 units, at the last meeting, 50 units would potentially be coming from 114 Whitwell. And then I think the presenter that presented last time also suggested from other developments that Fox Rock could be doing around the city, other pieces could be coming from those other pieces. Where would they come from, just for my own clarification?
Well, we do own other property in the city now, but I think that the intent there was to say, in order to take this on, what we knew at the time has proved out to be true, is that this is a commitment that we're going to be involved in this project and hopefully others in the future as the city revitalizes. So as we finalize the numbers for what the workforce housing looks like, it was an intent to show that we would subsidize those here.
You'd be subsidizing those in the downtown, but you'd be potentially subsidizing them from other developments that you'd be potentially doing?
Correct.
But you don't have those worked out as a...
No.
And do you have, I know you've purchased, what are the other areas that Fox Rock has purchased in the city of Quincy, just so I have it?
Well, we own two office buildings in North Quincy as part of the Quincy Center Development. We acquired the Masonic Temple at 1170 Hancock Street and 1200 Hancock.
1200 Hancock, is that the Citizens?
Yes.
And currently, the, those buildings that you just mentioned are, none of them are residential, have residential pieces.
Correct.
The Masonic Temple, I know that was in the paper, did that have a section for, was there any residence in that section? It was a restaurant, I remember, but I don't remember what the rest of it was for.
Yeah, there's no development proposal for that site right now. There's a complicated historic process and MIPA permitting process that we need to go through there. But we are actively looking to redevelop that property as well, since it's blighted.
Yep. And when I, so when I look at, in your section of the presentation, it's actually the first page when you're showing some of the properties that Fox Rock Properties have done. I recognize the Longwater one in Norwell. Where are the other locations just, they're not, they're not labeled as to where they're from?
Waymouth, Norwell, and Plymouth.
Is the Waymouth one to the left of the presentation?
So the two properties at the top are in Norwell, property to the left is also in Norwell, property to the bottom right is in Waymouth.
Okay, and those are all medical office buildings, correct?
Office buildings?
Medical, they're all medical office buildings?
There are a mix of medical and office. So the property to the left, the top left, is 100% medical. That's leased to South Shore Hospital. Property to the right is a 250,000 square foot building that has a lot of medical providers in it, some office providers. The property to the bottom right has transitioned to medical office, and the property to the left is largely office, I mean, medical office, excuse me.
So when you describe medical office, are they, are they all ambulatory as well, or just medical offices?
There's a lot, there's primary care, there's different specialties, and you should these buildings, happy to provide you with an overall description of each of our properties, if that would be helpful.
But when we specifically talk about ambulatory, ambulatory, and I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time saying that word, ambulatory is a little bit different than just medical office or primary care, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and could you tell me, of all these buildings, how many, what's, are there any of these ambulatory?
Yes, there's ambulatory in some of these. I can't give you the exact square footage off the top of my head, but I'm happy to follow up with that information.
Okay, you could share that with us. And in the building, I realize that we're talking about the LDA, we're defining it as a medical office building, but we're presenting it, and again, this is the difference between the LDA and the presentation, and I understand it's a lease that you're going to be going into, but there's a presumption that this is going to be ambulatory for this building, correct?
A portion of it, yes.
A portion of it. And I guess that's a language I'd like to see tightened up as well, because when I'm looking in the LDA, I think Counselor Palmucci also mentioned it, but, you know, the commercial use means medical office, medical lab space, or some combination thereof with ancillary retail and restaurant use. There's nowhere that it's telling me that it's going to be more of an ambulatory. And really, the general public is being preceded to believe that that's what it is. We could certainly go ahead with that, but in the, I'm not suggesting that this is going to happen by any means, but this is where it can get, the trust has to be built between, you know, government and private entity, that we're going to get what we expect. I mean, this is, this development in the downtown has been going on for a really long time, and we very often have things in front of us that we think we're going to get, and then we have to be happy with it. It's kind of like you get what you get, you don't get upset, kind of thing. And that's fine when I was giving my kids popsicles, but it's not so great when it comes to the development of our city. And we just want to make sure that we're eyeing clad in what we're going to be getting, and our expectations are equal on both sides. So it doesn't appear that way in the LDA, and that's what I get concerned with. I'm hearing it, but I'm not convinced that it's going to be there. The same thing when I get to that back page, when we have, you know, when we're talking about in the back page, which was not in the overview here, of course, I can't find it, where you talk about the outdoor use and, you know, live, work, play is a great tagline, but it's not a, it's not really a commitment to businesses or things that are going to come. We've been saying work, live, work, play for a while. And I appreciate the person that said that we have restaurants, we don't have commercial use, we don't, and the medical office building will bring a tremendous asset. And I just want to say that, if it's, if this is where we're going and this is how we get there, I think it could be great. I do think we have some separation of a few things that we need to do, and we need to build out some language that we need to talk about here. But when we're looking at this back page, which is in my presentation, not in yours, you have food hall, outdoor movie screening, coffee bar, concerts, farmer's market, all these things are great, and they're all written out, but they're not in the LDA either. And I think Counselor Crowe was alluding to that as well, but that's part of your presentation tonight. Is that, is that part of your cost as well?
So when it says ancillary retail, that's in the buildings. The rest of that, and I know you're considering a separate matter in regards to the takings of some additional properties along Hancock Street.
Is it what they could be?
Those, those buildings need to be revitalized. And that is a big part of why we feel like we can make this investment.
I understand those buildings need to be revitalized, but you're mentioning them here, and you're, that's not part of what you're...
It was a design presentation that is clearly aspirational, but we think very realistic and needs to happen and is a big part of why people will come down here, and a big part of why these medical providers were able to publicly commit to this despite some real parking issues and despite some other challenges that we're confident we can work through. But that absolutely needs to happen, and whatever role we can play in it to be a catalyst and working with the council and work with the mayor's office.
But it's currently not part of the LDA, it's just for presentation purpose only.
Correct.
Okay. I just want that clarified, because, you know, Counselor DeBona was excited to see this, and we should be excited to see that. However, it's not part of the LDA, it's not, it's just here for presentation purposes. It's not, it's something that we would like to see happen, but it's not part of, and you would happily help out, should, just like when you, when we talk about some of the community services that we do in the presentation, your, Fox Rock has been very generous to the city of Quincy, and Rob Hill has as well. And, but when we're talking about this, this is strictly, it's a presentation, and it's what could be, but not part of the LDA.
And I'd say, you know, in terms of earning that trust and maybe, and maybe talking through some of these issues, you know, we acquired 1495 Hancock Street, which is listed as a taking as part of that presentation. You know, hopefully, what we're doing there, and Dr. Green from South Shore announced this when we had the press conference, they're occupying that building entirely for primary care. It's going to bring people here while this building's being built, you know, at significant cost. The ground floor of that area was leased, the front portion to Fat Cat to expand, and the back portion for a small music venue that's going through the permitting process. And then we revitalized that walkway. We need to see more of that. That is an issue that we've, you know, it's not just the investment in the building, it was the investment to make significant improvements, to try to be that catalyst. And I think...
Absolutely. I absolutely agree with that, and this is, this is the combination of the conversations I'm having, and these are all multiple, you know, multiple layers. We're talking about, you know, the LDA in this particular case that's in your presentation. But again, I've asked the city for an economic development plan as to how they're going to do this. It's nice to put into the presentation, but the, and to use a tagline, and that's what it is, a tagline, work, live, and play, that's not the actual plan of how you're going to be able to attract the things that we need to come here and be able to develop out those areas. And we can put them in presentations, but that doesn't make them real. I just want to see it become real. That's the reason why I'm pointing that out, because although it's in your presentation, and although we can get excited about the fact that it says farmer's market, farmer's market could be real, because we do have actually a farmer's market that's been displaced several times, doing very well, but displaced from, from several different locations throughout the city. That, that I can see happening without much effort, because that could happen there. But some of these other things, that's, that's, there, I'd love to see them happen. I don't know how we're going to go about doing that. It's still a long stretch, and I think at this point, we should have, we should have a plan that we can actually, actually educate the people who are currently in the city of Quincy that want to stay in the city of Quincy as to where they can fit into the city of Quincy, because we're talking about taking other areas, but we're not talking about how we're going to, you know, reestablish those same good business relationships with some of the people that are here today. But when I see it in your presentation, it's in a presentation, but it's not really part of the LDA, it's a part of want for your development section. And that's where the disconnect happens again. So I, I just, I think we have to kind of be realistic about how we're presenting those things. And when I get back to the parking, so the parking, you said 200 spaces that you, that Fox Rock will be in the medical office building itself? Not in the, I just, I'm trying to figure out where you're getting...
Two, two spaces per thousand, so on a 400,000 square foot building...
Yep.
That's two spaces per thousand there, so 400 parking spaces.
Right. But you, your development itself, the city, you're, you're going to be looking for the city or the council to approve a parking garage down the line that will work out a lease with you, hopefully in the, in the LDA, correct?
As part of this LDA, I believe the way it's drafted and the way it's, the way it's going to work, is that we are looking to utilize the existing surface parking, and we are contributing a portion of the land that we own to the future construction of a parking garage. That requires, I believe, additional assemblage, and that's a, that's a big part of a follow-on conversation.
So you're, so you're going to, so you're saying you're going to contribute a portion of your property that you own? Is there value to the property that you own?
Yes.
Okay. I ask that because we seem to be lacking the value of any of the property that the city has. I understand that you have to be able to work that out, but we're not seeing that other side of what our value is either. The other question I had, so you, in the medical office building, how many spaces will be in the medical office building? Is it 200 spaces that will...
No, 400.
I know 400 you need for the medical office, I heard.
No. There's, there is, there is 400 spaces in the medical office building. A building of 200,000 square feet would require 800 parking spaces.
And then you're saying that you'll use some of the space that's in the hotel, or no?
So the, the ground floor level, the hotel will be built with no additional parking, same with the residential. So it starts and stops with the parking demands of the medical office user. And then the hotel and the residential are a shared use concept, where those can be used at a different time and different hours.
So there's going to be, so only the, so there's not going to be any, you're going to share the 800 spaces then with the hotel and the residential, is that what you're telling me?
Correct.
Okay. So, and now the photos in the presentation, this is just, so they're all stock photos that we just, are they actual places that you did, or are these just stock photos that you're presenting?
Those are examples that CBT put together of other activated urban areas.
That you, that you...
Oh, no, we didn't, we didn't do those.
So they're just, they're just stock photos showing what it could be? Again, the reason why I'm saying that is because this is, this, these presentations are just what the other presentations, they're, but I'm trying to, trying to determine, you know, when I'm looking at this and seeing some of the information that's in the back, we're really strictly, when looking at this presentation, the three buildings, but in the LDA itself, all we have is the medical office building. We don't have the hotel, and we don't have, we don't have the housing at this time. We're going to tighten that up. But for, when I'm looking at that, I'm, I'm, that's what I'm saying.
We have a real commitment to the arts and urban placemaking. A local artist did a mural for us in the alleyway, Brandon Rockwell. He crashed my wife's car while we were, while he was painting murals for us. He's a big part of, of what we're doing. I would ask you to come down, take a look at the alley, happy to walk you through it.
I've been down there.
Happy to walk you through the, the spaces and the retail. But that is, that is what we're aspiring to do with this project.
There's more murals?
Partly murals, partly farmer's markets, partly destination retail, as Council de Bono alluded to.
Okay, so you're doing that again, now, so this is the stuff that we're hoping will be done. It's not in the LDA, I'm just trying to say that it's not in the LDA.
No, I was very clear that we're not doing that along the Hancock Street, other than what we own, and I think the evidence of that is what we're doing to the only building that we own along Hancock, and how we're trying to approach that building.
Do we have, do we have, so the value of the property that you're going to exchange with the city, do we have, do we have an estimate as to what the cost, the, the value of that is, that's been provided to us? Appraisal, thank you. Look for the word. Do we have an appraisal for that piece of property?
We do not have an appraisal for that piece of property, we pay it before we come in to the city, but we can't put that together, we put the same appraisal, we can do it overall.
And who is that?
Steven Foster.
And did Steven Foster do the appraisal for the Messina lot?
Yes, he did.
Okay. And will Steven Foster be doing the appraisal for 114 Whitwell?
Not at my house. He's not involved with any of the, of the, of the.
So you're not involved with what's up at Hospital Hill, but Hospital Hill is part of this equation, unless we change our mind and take it out? It's just interesting, I mean, I would think that you would want, as a city and as a developer, we would want to see all of those things together. If that's a proposal that's before us, I consider it one unit until we separate it out. So 114 Whitwell does have a cost, it has a reverter on it, but once you take the reverter off the 4.25, that value of that property, of a 114 goes up. So you have to look at it without the reverter and say, what would be the value of this property for us to be able to determine what we as a city are, are doing? $4.25 million is the cost to take it off of, off the reverter, which then makes that property much more valuable. It's, it's part of the equation, until we take it out, if that it does happen, once we get the more information that we get from what Council Palmucci was mentioning earlier, but all those things are important. So I would think when you say you don't have anything to do with 114 Whitwell, 114 Whitwell is, right now, without the language being taken out, is a primary piece of this LDA, and how you can say you don't have anything to do with it, I, I don't understand. I know that's not part of, that's, you're part of the LDA too, but that's, that's just, it's, all of these things are, are the same thing as we're talking about them, until we as the council decide whether or not we're going to be able to separate them out. So I, I do think those are all pieces of this puzzle. But thank you very much, that's, that's all I have to tell you. I certainly don't want to, I, I know it sounds like I'm being negative, I'm just trying to understand the full package.
No, thanks for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chris. I'm going to get to you in a second, but before I do, I just wanted to take a step back and offer CBT another opportunity to come up, and can you just talk a little bit more about CBT's background in developing properties like this?
So we've been in business for 50 years, and we've worked on a whole host of projects in different towns and cities, in Massachusetts and all over the country and the world.
Have you had experience developing properties like this before, where it's mixed use across, you know, both office space and hotels and apartments?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so you've developed all three types of properties in the past?
Yes.
Okay. Have you developed in cities this size before, and, and on lots this size?
We're currently doing a big project like this in Malden, Malden Center, which is actually a city hall with a private development partnership, that they toured on the city hall, and it's a mixed-use development, with the city hall going back into it, it's office and residential, so we do these projects.
Okay, and I don't know if this is necessarily a question you can answer or Chris can answer, but I'd be curious to see, and, and you're working with Fox Rock to put this plan together, you know, how much was it that CBT was able to bring their expertise, look at this size lot, look at sort of the demographics of this city, and determine that, you know, the hospital, oh, sorry, not the hospital, the office use and the hotel and the apartments would be the best use for this property?
That's the Fox Rocks program.
Okay. Chris, if you can just come up and speak to that. Thank you, I just wanted to understand a little bit more about the experience of CBT and what they've developed, and just understanding, you know, who's going to be in the city potentially in developing here. So, Chris, I was asking him following up, once he gave a brief background on CBT's company's experience, you know, just trying to understand based off of, again, their experience and their background, how much of this was a, a sort of collaborative effort of establishing that this was going to be, what was going to be the best use for this parcel, based off of what we're looking for for medical use and apartments and hotel?
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, it was very collaborative, you know, I think CBT brought a wealth of experience, and, and quickly determined the opportunities and the challenges in terms of what this presents, and I think the principal benefit that you're seeing is how you smartly think about parking, particularly in a city that is, that is rapidly changing, about to bring on a 700 space plus garage, the parking demands not only now, but in the future for medical providers and residents. Those are all, you know, cutting-edge issues that I think people are struggling with in, in Boston and other urban areas, and, and we very much front-loaded that conversation to say, how does this fit into here? We certainly don't want to be the last development that greatly overbuilds parking, but we certainly can underbuild it as well. And so I think that, that informed a lot of the uses around there, so particularly the hotel and the residential, how to, how to tie those in. And the other one piece I'd mentioned, in terms of thinking about the medical programming and how it fits in, we engaged a separate firm in it before even talking to the medical providers on what the city needs, how that fits into the demographics, how that fits into the future demand, and so that helped us get to the size of the building. The floor plates are, are a big issue, parking, again, is a big issue.
And who, you didn't say who, but can you say who it is that you had that conversation with?
A group, Lens. Happy to provide a little more detail on their report, which I think would be instructive as part of this process and a follow-up.
That'd be great if we could see that, and just, you know, again, to sort of see what you guys saw, for them to determine, again, look at the city and see what the needs were. So did that also, your conversation with Lens, did that also determine then what would fall under this category of medical use as well?
That was part of it, and I think, you know, largely, the conversation with the South Shore and Brigham team is diving more into the details about how that gets programmed, but it, it, it really informed the, the total size of the building, the floor plates, and, you know, circulation, and how that would, how that would fit in with parking.
Okay, speaking of parking, so I know my colleagues have sort of hammered this to you a little bit too, and I just want, and just sort of listening to the comments, I think what I'm looking for is just clarity, so currently, as, as it's proposed, it's half of the parking requirement, and the other half, which is mandated for medical use facilities, is in the LDA with respect to how the city's going to manage that relationship and how we're going to build that. But early on in this conversation, when Council Palmucci had asked you about the parking as well for the one that's like in the, in the podium style in Building C, and then for the hotel, maybe I misunderstood, but can you explain, so there is no other parking except for the parking in that Building C, in the office, in the medical office building?
So there's no, we, we are contemplating no additional parking requirement for those, other than reutilizing and utilizing the spaces that would be required to build the medical office building, which requires, you know, an outsized parking demand in, in a building that has a, a very different schedule and rhythm than what a hotel and what a residential development would include. So it's a shared parking concept that we think smartly uses that land to drive additional development downtown.
So then the parking for all three buildings would be the parking spaces that are designated currently under Parcel C, that medical office, and whatever parking the city potentially builds, correct?
Parcel C, there's some, there's ground floor parking underneath BNA, as I think one of the slides that Key Shore had, happy to pull it up.
Yeah, it's a slide that says program on it? Yeah, there you go.
So if you're just talking about a, just a, a medical building on its own, that the parking on the rest of that site, which is not conducive to kind of commercial construction, as you can see, that's a very large floor plate on the rest of the site, so the development would be above that parking area.
Right, so again, I'm just trying to clarify, so for these three buildings, as is currently being shown, if you go back one slide, I think it's that one that I'm looking at, nope, back? Is this one not in there? There you go, okay. So for these three parcels that are in front of us right now, the only designated parking that's going to be built for these three parcels as it is being presented to us is this, when you go to Parcel C, that block there, this is parking two spaces per thousand ground square feet, that's the only designated parking currently, right, for these three buildings?
Correct, and there's some ground floor spaces in and around Buildings D and A.
But the ground floor spaces aren't designated specifically to those buildings, right? That's for public consumption, so like if the people come and they, you know, want to park in and around that area, then they can use those ground parking spaces. Those aren't like designated hotel or designated apartment spaces, correct?
Sure, yep.
Okay, so, that's, okay, okay, I just want to clarify that, because I, I, again, from listening to the answers, I thought I heard that there was going to be additional parking for Parcel B, which would be better, just because there's going to be now, we're looking at Parcel C with the nine floors of medical office, or not nine floors, but we're, we're looking at, how many floors is it that's going to be the medical office?
Six.
Six floors, and then we have the hotel that are six floors, and then we have the residential that's also 15 floors, so, and again, I know this is in the downtown district, so the requirements are a little bit different, but, you know, and I certainly do want to keep in mind that this is, you know, transit-oriented development and whatnot, but it's still a lot of parking that's unaccounted for, and that is, is, you know, constantly going to be a red flag for me. So I know we're going to be revisiting the parking in the LDA. I'd like to see that part fleshed out, and see then how that also goes to consider these other two parcels here. But I appreciate you clarifying, because I know you've gotten asked about the parking a couple of times. The other thing I wanted to hammer home, that was also repeated here, that I had questions on, but again, I'm, I'm going to repeat it just to, to hammer this point home, is that we have been looking, and I know that we're working on receiving the appraisals for the Ross lot, that is something that would be helpful to this conversation, and so, you know, in moving forward, again, just repeating what my colleagues had asked for as well, it'd be really helpful to have that document to, to review. Also, defining specifically what medical use is, you know, going back and forth in this document a number of times, I'm trying to figure out, am I reading this wrong? But it's not, it's, it's very broad as it's currently listed, and I'm not doubting your commitment to bringing in your partners that you have, that are looking to build the medical use, you know, facility and to operate out of this, but, you know, that commitment versus how it's written are two very different things, and so it'd be helpful to tighten that up. And I know, again, that's something that's being worked on, just repeating it to hit that point home, that that is, you know, something that's important to us. And then the other thing too is, you know, we talked about the sort of corridor here that, on the current screen, is that like, it's sort of pink? No, go back. This, this area here, where it's a little bit pink there, right, and that's a space that you would own, so you'd be able to, you know, put into that space all these amenities, like the, you know, the walking area, the seating, the outdoor park, and the arts and all of that. This is going to be a drive-through area as well, right? We anticipate the street's going to be an area where cars can travel through?
Correct.
Okay. Next to that, though, are parcels that you don't currently own, correct? I think you own one of those parcels right now?
Yes.
Okay, so then how, how, how would the rest of this then fall into play? Like you've got the food hall, the outdoor screen, movie screening, the coffee bar, concert, farmer's market, so again, would love to see these things happen and come to fruition, but just looking at the entirety of this, right, what does, what does the timeline look like, as far as what building's going to go up first, then when are we going to get to the streetscapes? Are there going to be, you know, potential, and, you know, there's a certain level of this that's private between you and other private property owner that you can't disclose, but, you know, are you going to be looking to acquire other properties there so that you can actually develop these other things, like the food hall, like the outdoor movie theater? I mean, what does your timeline look like in order to achieve this model that's in front of us right now?
Yeah, great question. So our, our commitment first is to, is to build the medical office building and the attendant retail that goes below that. In terms of the rest of the streetscape on the backside of Hancock, I can't emphasize enough how important that planning is to the, the vision that you're seeing and our investment down here. Council Palmucci hosted a meeting, I believe it was a year ago, where we got all the property owners together. I, I haven't seen any investment on that side of the street, you know, we've tried to facilitate some of that. I think at this moment, we are trying to lead by example in terms of reinvesting in those buildings.
No, I'm not doubting that, I'm just curious to know, sort of, again, what your thought process is for these different buildings that need to get built, and then, you know, at what point do then the streets, you know, start getting redone, and we start expanding the sidewalks, and then at what point do those other features that we see here start popping up and coming online? So again, I'm just trying to understand timeline for that.
Yep. So I, I think our, our, once we start building the medical building and looking at the rest of this, that's the kind of new streetscape, the new retail, that, that has a different, you know, different operator, different retailers, right? Those are, those are bigger retail footprints, a different, I think, what happens on the Hancock side of the street, the back of those buildings, I think the separate matter that you're looking at in terms of listing those as additional takings, parcels, is a huge step in that direction, and however we can facilitate and be a part of it, we would love to do that.
And for your current properties that you have the ability to do retail for, are you working with any commercial realtors, or, because my understanding of your background is that you guys are able to build commercial spaces for larger tenants, but if we're looking at what's going on down here, it seems like it's more, you know, 2,000 to 5,000 square feet retail spaces, and so, you know, is that something that you guys are, as, as Fox Rock as an organization, going out and soliciting, or are you working with a commercial real estate organi, who are you guys doing?
Yeah, we've talked to a number of, of brokers that have done, you know, kind of build-to-suit leases for retail tenants in the city for the new space, and in terms of the existing space, and we have very limited amount of it unfortunately, it's, you know, that is, that's a proactive effort, where we're, you know, put a pop-up art gallery in the Commonwealth Building until, until that, just to get people coming down here. The music venue that I mentioned, that was a proactive effort to reach out to a local group that's taken that on. So I think we're trying to, it's a big part of what we're doing, CBT's been a huge help in that, they've done this in other places, and as time goes on, the, the more we can kind of invest in that and be proactive, I think the better for the development.
Yeah, no, I think, I mean, I think conceptually, these things are phenomenal, right, and they're going to be, I think, a huge addition to not just the residents, but the business owners down here, for other folks who are private property owners, who you had mentioned, you know, had come before us before and talked to us. I just think that, you know, all around, conceptually, this is, this is incredible, you know, and it's something that we want to see happen, and, and I'm hopeful that this will stimulate, you know, subsequent progress in other areas of the city as well. I just think that, you know, for me, you know, and I, I hope that this comes across, I, I want that same end goal, right? I mean, conceptually, I want this end goal, I think it's going to be phenomenal. It's the how we're going to get there that, you know, I'm really trying to flush out with these conversations, and I know, Mr. Chairman, there are a number of questions that we're still waiting on answers for, and so I'm looking forward to those, and sort of diving in to see how that really changes the form of the LDA as it currently stands, and with, you know, Council Hughes' amendment, I think that's going to be helpful as well to consider that, because that's also part of the how, right, is tying into the 114 Whitwell Street, and I know that that, for you guys, was a consideration, it seems like, you know, when you're giving this history, you know, that would, that, those two properties have always been tied together in conversations when you guys were looking at these two properties, but, you know, then, then that affects this end goal that we're trying to all get to, you know, and, and so I think it's going to be really important for us to be able to look through and see what we can do to pull these two apart, you know, should that be the best thing for, for how we can move forward and get to this, and not just have it be a concept, but have it become a reality, right? Because again, I think that this is going to be a great benefit to everyone across the city, truly, you know, but, you know, I'm glad to finally have you guys in front of us here tonight. I think that this is going to be an ongoing conversation. Clearly, there is going to be updated documents that are going to be shared with us, I look forward to seeing those. You know, when it comes to getting those updated documents, I, I would personally ask if we can get the appraisal sooner rather than later, those would be helpful to, to go through those appraisals and get those in front of us. And I would hope that, you know, we have you guys here in front of us the next time we meet on this to answer questions, because there's a lot of different folks who are in the room, I mean, just even with your team alone, you know, you've got other businesses and other organizations who are coming in and helping, and it's helpful to have you here in front of us tonight to answer these questions. But it's going to be an ongoing process, I would love to, again, see this conception[1717.98] this conception become a reality, I just want to make sure that, again, the how we're getting there is going to be something that, you know, that we could be comfortable with. So I appreciate you taking the time tonight, I appreciate that you brought this gentleman from CBT to talk about, sort of how they worked with you guys to put this together, and, you know, I look forward to seeing the additional information that we need in order to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Lee.
Councilor McCarthy.
Real brief, Chris, could I grab? Good evening.
Evening.
Have been, have been asked, and one of the things that I, I think that haven't been thrown out there is, I'm glad Fox Rock is in the middle of this, I don't see a big line of developers, and haven't since the Street Works episode, and you folks were able to step up and get involved. A lot of the comments tonight, I think, will be worked out, I know that Councilor Palmucci and Councilor Mahoney had some great points in regards to the, the LDA, and I know that the Hospital Hill Association, I, I met with them also over the weekend, and talked a little bit about how they're very pro downtown to see it work, of course, concerned about their neighborhood, which I think everybody understands, the density, the height, et cetera, and I know you're, you're working at that also, and we'll see, we'll see that soon, so, no, I think it's, it's a very positive public hearing, very positive in regards to all the comments here tonight, and some of the answers that we're going to get, so, thanks, Chris, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just want to follow up on what I spoke about a little earlier, and then what the colleagues of mine have, have kind of spoke about, just, just real quick, Chris, you know, without, without the arts and the corridor, and, you know, the seating, and the possible concert, and outdoor seating, and all that stuff that's going on with that, I'd be pretty inclined to decline on doing this project, because really, in a nutshell, I know it's going to, it's going to create jobs, it's going to create, you know, workforce housing for, for some people to live in, we're going to get some hotel motel tax, but if there's no benefit for the citizens of the city of Quincy, I wouldn't be inclined to do, to maybe even consider it, because seeing this corridor, this McConville Way that's going to revitalize, I mean, you have 1495 Hancock Street, is that, do you own that building?
Correct.
And we've spoke offline about what you envision inside that building, about possibly the fat cat's going to go there temporarily, is that correct?
Yes.
And you, you have talked about possible arcades, you've talked about bowling alleys, you've talked about different floors and different action, but I think the, the main ingredient is, right now, we have, we're battling the parking issue, for a lot of people to make an investment in this Hancock Street corridor, there has to be some sort of parking. The good news is, is at least we're going to get 400, 720 parking spots over on the Hancock Lot side, which will, will alleviate from the construction that's going to happen here, because this is going to be a process. You know, we talked about optimism, being optimistic about some things, and making the investment into the downtown, I think this is the part that we have to make the investment in first, and then the other stuff will follow, and, and that's the leap of faith, and that's the optimistic, optimism that we were going to have to have and take, that we can piggyback off of all this. We saw a lot of different developers come in here tonight, almost all the ones that are revitalizing the downtown, some outbound, some inbound, and they were all in favor of, of you guys stepping up to the plate with the, with the South Shore Hospital and the Brigham and Women's component that'll bring, and that will basically attract all these other ventures, but I think this is the start of what we need to do in this side of the Ross lot, is that 200,000 square foot medical use that everybody's been asking about in the city, but, to be very honest with you, without these other components that's going to tailor up with it down on the backside of the Hancock Street, I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be, and that's why I think it's a good deliberation that we're having here with putting it to the table and saying, what are you going to, what are you going to do, what are you going to attract, what's your part of the, of the investment that you're going to do, because without it, for me, I, I'm no-go, because I want to see the investment for the citizens of the city of Quincy, the people that have been living here, that have made their investments, they've paid taxes for 25-plus years, what are they going to get out of this deal? This is, this is the envision that I've been envisioning, I know that LBC and the Nova Suite side, they're going to make an atrium that's going to be used for the public, when the parking gets in, it's going to, it's going to help out Alba, it's going to help out the fours, it's going to help out 16C, I mean, Leo, Leo Kaka is putting in a new roof deck, he's, he's investing 5,000 square feet of a brand-new roof deck, because he envisions Quincy as being an unbelievable place, and the guy, and all the businesses around here, and all the restaurants have withdained this parking issue, and, you know, the parking garage is coming up, but this is, these are all connected, it's like the law of physics, one without the other is nothing, so, I think when that parking garage gets open in the next few months on the, on the Hancock Lot, this will kind of be the next component of all this, and I don't know where, how the vote is up here, I don't know what my colleagues are on, but that's what I envisioned for Quincy. For me, without the commitment from you, without the commitment from the, the people that you work with on putting and bringing in the arts part and the portion of that, I'm a no, but if you're made, and you're committed to investing into the downtown with something that's going to benefit the city, the citizens of Quincy, like we've spoken about, I'd be more inclined for the vote, so, for me, it has to go together, and that's what all the folks have been envisioning out there, that's what we've been talking to them about, envisioning this, and you can't, we, I can't go out there on the street, I can't go out there in the public and say, yeah, we're going to build these things, but it's a big question mark on whether we're going to have all these other things that we spoke about, the arts, and the bowling alleys, and the arcades, and all those other things. Are you committed to, to putting in those, kind of like that Faneuil Hall piece into the downtown, into your part, your Fox Rock property component?
We, we are, you know, at this point, I think we are committed to leading from the front on that issue, because we see it's vitally important, so that's what we've done at 1495 Hancock, which is the only building on this strip that we currently own, that building is now fully leased to three great operators, and the alleyway was redone, and we need to see more of that. This, this, this development, and, you know, CBT can speak to it, or we can have other, this development is, is far easier to execute in a suburban office area that has no retail, it's, it's cheaper to build, it's easier to get to, it has all those benefits, it works because of the investment that's been made, and, and the streetscape, and all the things that bring people down here, so, in order for this to, to work, that, that additional investment needs to happen, and we're committed to doing our part.
Now, I mean, obviously, we have this component of the LDA, but are you looking to invest into more parcels, into more land back in the Ross lot, are you kind of envisioning if this goes out correctly, are you looking to invest more?
I mean, we love, we love the city of Quincy, we love what we're doing here, we get up every day energized, we're continuing to add teammates who are excited about coming to work, are excited about what we're doing, there's restaurants that open, they're, they're successful, they, there, there can be more room, so, we are very, very focused on doing our job well, continuing to earn trust, and getting this medical office building built, and our offices are here, and, and this is, this is our, our jobs, and we're down here every day, so, we look forward to continuing to work with the city and, and other developers as well, who are making a similar investment.
Thank you for coming in tonight, because I think the timing comes in at a good time with the parking garage on the other side, going to be completed, and the rector set is coming up every day as we go by, and that's going to help out with your construction and your, I mean, obviously, if this goes through, with your part of doing the downtown, so, I'm, I'm pretty optimistic about it, I'll be honest with you, because you're at the table, you, you're the one that, that wants to invest into this, and here we are, and you went out and found the medical pe, medical component, which is the South Shore Hospital and, and the Brigham and Women's, and we had spoke about this a year or two ago, and you didn't have that component, so, you went out, found it, marketed it, and here we are at the table, so, I think this is, this is an important part of, of what we envision in the downtown, it's the right thing, this, this medical use is the right thing that we need to do, so, with that, I'm looking to, to, to listen to the other councilors, follow up on the amendments that Councilor Hughes had proposed, and I, I want to give her a little props for, for really doing a good job on Ward Five for the Hospital Hill Association, and stepping in and, and really representing that, that group, so, with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, I wanted to get into a little bit of the LDA, Bill, are you the best guy for that? Are you, let's try that, are you the guy who's here for that?
I'm the guy who's here for that, but I, I do want to emphasize that because of the feedback we've gotten from the council, and your line of questioning, counselor earlier, I think was right on the mark on some of the areas that we need to, need to tighten up, so, as I mentioned in opening the session, we are working with Mr. Shea to accomplish that, and elaborating on the comments made by Mr. Reel, they have been very forthright in coming back and meeting with us after our prior meeting to talk about areas where we could collaboratively improve that document.
All right, don't filibuster me here, all right.
No, no, I.
I won't touch any of that stuff, I, I get it, that you guys are going to, you guys are going to work on it, but I have some other, some other points that I wanted to ask you about relative to the LDA, so, I'm, I'm looking at, do you have a copy of the LDA?
I do.
Okay, so, I'm looking at Section 10, the environmental remediation section, specifically Section 10A4, which stands for the proposition that the city is responsible for all costs of environmental remediation without limitation. So, my question, I don't think you can even look at that section to go, but I want to be clear what I'm talking about. Do we have any estimates of what the, I know in the diff, when we talked about that, there were some of the remediation costs were in there, but I didn't get a sense when we were talking about that piece of it, whether or not that was the total, the, the total, that represented everything, and I guess what my, when I'm reading it, and what my notes, what comes to mind in my notes is that, why would we not cap it, right? Because this is essentially like writing a blank check on something, Mr. Shea, Mr. Shea rises.
Just standing next to my colleague.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, we, we have talked about this very issue, and that section is subject to a follow-on agreement between the parties.
Okay.
There have been estimates as to, and the estimates have varied, there are some unknown conditions, but there will be a follow-on agreement that, with more specificity, will address those issues, and it, and it may involve a cap, but as you know, much of what we're talking about here is currently city land.
Right.
And we are, at this moment, responsible for any environmental contamination, so it's not a new burden we're taking on, it's a burden we already possess.
Correct, right, we're also taking on a little bit of other burden that we don't currently possess, right?
I, I don't know that to be the case until we do that follow-on agreement.
Okay, so I guess maybe it's not, I mean, this is the mixing bags and pots of things, but, so, under the URDP, we'd be taking on, not specific with the LDA, but under the URDP, which is contemplated in the LDA, Amendment Five, when we're targeting certain parcels that we know already have environmental contamination, we'd be taking on new contamination.
And those were potential acquisitions, as I know you recall, that would be, that would be one of the factors on whether, whether you would take, take that building, of course.
And so, going to Section 10, so I appreciate that, I look forward to seeing what, what comes out of, was that, will we have that before we vote on the LDA, or is that something that's contemplated happening after we approve the LDA? I can't tell you how much I like having a lawyer who represents the city council and the city council only at our meetings, no offense to Mr. Timmons, but, you know, it's nice knowing.
You know my, the role I have in these, I don't negotiate the deal for you, for the city, I advise you, I can't advise you unless the document is clear. It's not clear, okay, and I think people, you know, disagree on that, and I, I have some sympathy for that, because it's a very complicated deal, it's gone through a lot of hands over the past few years, and, so, but basically, my role, and I've served this in a few of these deals, going back to.
Jim, can you speak into the mic, please?
Going back to that first one, what was it, Street Works?
We don't say that anymore.
But again, you got out of that without too much, you know.
It was a good deal for the city, we got out of it without.
Without, anyway.
Too much damage, yeah. So you're working on it.
I want to talk, yeah, so, so basically, I want to minimize your risk, not that there isn't risk in a, in a development deal, but I want to quantify it as before you part with your land, okay, so basically, on the contamination, it's an excellent point, I don't want to, we, we're not going to write a.
Blank check, yeah.
So basically, so there's going to be a remediation plan that will be mutually agreed upon.
Beforehand.
Beforehand, and, and a guarantee, and to the extent we can, a guaranteed maximum price for the cleanup.
Right.
Okay, and also, it's, I understand that, I'm not a, it's not my specialty, but I've been around it long enough, there's clean and there's cleans, if you're cleaning up someone else's land, which after you've conveyed it, it's somebody else's land, you know, they want it so clean they can eat it.
Right.
I mean, it's overstated, but that's, that's not necessary, so basically, we have to get a reasonable cleanup plan, and that's part of the deal, you'll do it, and you'll know what it's going to cost you before you part with your land for, however much you're going to get for it.
Okay, all right, now, the Section 10C says that the redeveloper will oversee the remediation work, why is it that the city wouldn't oversee that? I mean, I guess I was thinking to that, you know, clean versus clean again, I'm thinking, why wouldn't the city be overseeing the people we're paying for, rather than the beneficiary of, of the work? Is that normal?
Well, overseeing, I don't think, yeah.
It's an excellent question, and it, and it may be simply the language that's being used, our plan is to do on the Ross side exactly what we have been doing on the Hancock side, that is to say, pursuant to the special legislation, we were able to designate the developer as the party to do the work, because of the efficiencies that the city derives from making that approach.
Well, the difference is on, on the garage, the city and the, the developer share in the benefit of that work, whereas in here, the, the benefit is exclusive to the developer that the city is paying for.
I'm not sure I understand that analogy, the, this is work that the city would have to do, whether this developer was on the scene or not.
No, I understand that, right.
So, it's work that the city would have to do, we happen to be in a circumstance where there's a lot of competing construction going on, as there is in the Hancock Lot, and that was the rationale for designating Peter O'Connell's organization to work with Lee Kennedy, both in building the garage, as well as building their own building, and in the case of LBC, both in terms of their contractor, since an important part of that was the culvert that goes underneath their building, to build the public component, to replace that culvert with a new one, and to build a public space, the atrium space, and that work has been undertaken by.
No, I, I understand that, but the difference is that, that the city is the end, is a partial end user of those other projects.
Yes.
In this particular instance, the city is not the end user. We're doing, we're paying for the environmental cleanup that benefits the developer exclusively.
I, I don't know that to be the case, however, to the extent that, because it's a combination of their land as well as ours, as part of the, the land exchange, the land that we own is already contaminated, and so, we, it would not be possible for us to convey contaminated land and find someone who is willing to develop it.
No, I know, that's not my, but my question is to who's overseeing the remediation work?
No, the remediation will be overseen by the city, acting through Wood and Curran as our engineering component, and a construction overseer, the Crucial Group, Stephen Crucial, he's been the gentleman who reviews the bids, and incidentally, this is all within the framework of a guaranteed maximum price contract that is negotiated by an attorney representing the city who specializes in these kinds of contracts, that's the approach that we took on the Hancock Lot side, and that's how the city ensures that we get the quality we want at the price that's fair and reasonable.
Okay, I'll move on, Section 11B. Section 11B states that the city shall be responsible to fund all costs related to the construction and installation of public infrastructure improvements. That, so I've said a number of times, and I'll continue to say, we never had a debate up here at this body, maybe one happened in the executive offices, we never had a debate and any type of discussion up here as to whether or not it made sense for the city to be the master developer. It was just announced that we were the master developer after Streetworks fell apart, and I understand, I've heard the argument as to why we did that or why the mayor did that, but we never had that policy debate here. So I guess now would be an appropriate time to ask, what happened to the concept that was so integral to the downtown redevelopment, the Quincy Center redevelopment project when it was originally proposed and carried through for years? What happened to the concept of the tax revenue from the developments covering the bond payments for the infrastructure costs? Because this particular section, Section 11B, says that the city shall be responsible to fund all costs related to the construction and installation of public infrastructure improvements. It's not, the private money isn't coming before the public money, which was always a core principle of the Quincy Center redevelopment project previously. So I guess why? Like, why?
But as I understand that section, we're talking about public infrastructure. We're talking about public infrastructure that the city would be obligated to replace or upgrade.
We were always talking about that.
Yes, and we still are, so.
No, so previously, when it was private money first, then city money.
Oh, but.
It was still obligations that the city had anyway, so that.
That is, that is correct.
Apples to apples, why is it different?
Right. But I, that, if I'm not mistaken, that's a model that failed. So we still possess the obligation to improve the infrastructure, and it seems that's our financial responsibility. When it refers to the city's financially responsible, it would be through the city's various financing mechanisms, whether it's the DIF and the bonding or the bands that go along with that. So I don't see that I follow this notion of shifting. If what you're talking about was that under the Streetworks or, you know, whatever the prior model was, that they had made that commitment, that failed. Nobody else stepped forward to replace them with that offer, and the practical matter is that the city, if the city wants to attract investors into the city by way of these types of developments, we are going to have to provide infrastructure that can support those developments.
So let me just, I'm trying to unpack that a little bit. First, let me say I think we have a, maybe we don't have a disagreement, but I view failure under a different standard. So I don't view the Streetworks deal, my role in it, which was the LDA, right? I don't view that as a failure, I view that LDA as a success. Because we didn't lose city money, we actually benefited.
Point well, that's a point well taken. When I say failure, maybe there's inability to proceed.
Realized division, right, yeah.
That's correct.
And I remember somebody, I don't know who it was, who was here, somebody involved in the first Streetworks, in the first iteration here with Streetworks, and I recall them saying privately that, you know, it's usually never the first developer that gets things done, it's always the guy who comes next. And I thought, hmm, that's interesting. And, you know, low and behold, that's kind of where we ended up. But, so, the reason why I ask that, and the reason why I think it's important to define failure and what that means in terms of failure to reach the vision, to achieve the goal, but not a failure to protect the taxpayers, which is what my piece of this is. And that's where my question comes from about, one of the reasons that we, about the leading with public money versus leading with private money. Because that was one of the core concepts that protected the taxpayer. That was the safeguard, was that the private money led ahead of the public money. And so is it just that, in the conditions today, it's just not feasible? Is that why the concept is not one we're continuing to follow?
Yes.
All right. But we never put out an RFP for a master developer of the entire Quincy Center, right? It was just that nobody approached us?
We did not.
Okay. So when we say that, well, nobody stepped into their shoes, we didn't really invite anybody to step in their shoes. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I'm not, I don't know. I'll leave it at that, I guess. All right. Lastly, or not lastly, I got two more things. Second to last, Section 12, the iCube funds, this was one that struck me as odd. So I know that we're in the mix for iCube funds, and that's the state program. So that state program essentially says you can borrow the money, but if you don't hit certain benchmarks under the program, you're on the hook for it, right? So I think we're talking about $40 million, and we're looking to use the iCube, $40 million to fund that parking garage, right? So the iCube money, the string attached to the iCube money is that it has to generate state tax revenues at 1.5 times the value of the money borrowed, right? So it's 1.5 times the 40 million in state tax revenues. Do we have a projection as to what this LDA essentially will generate in state tax revenues?
We do not.
Okay. So how, so explain that. I mean, that's, so how do we know that? How do we take that risk to step into the iCube money?
We do, and it was provided to members of the council when we provided the draft of the LDA. And it is a draft, and it's a working draft, from Dr. Goodman. So we do have estimates, but we don't have a firm estimate as to the specific question.
So what are the state tax revenues that will come in?
Sorry?
What are the state tax revenues that'll come in from the, I'm not asking the number, but like, what does that mean? What is state tax revenue?
Well, state tax revenue would be income taxes for employees predominantly. Those, that's the tax base.
Okay.
And as to the funding for the garage, we are looking not only at iCube, but that is, as the LDA suggests, one of the principal funding sources we will pursue. Mr. Seymour, Greg Seymour, who's our KG, who's presented, he is probably the foremost expert in the state on how to recover those funds. He is advising us on that, and he's doing the projections, as you know, for the DIF. So that particular component of this is subject to some.
Some financial oversight.
As to different sources of funding for that. We are talking with FoxRock about the prospect of them providing some financing. So there are this mix of funding sources so that we're not solely reliant upon iCube.
Okay, and that's fine. We're still waiting on those projections, right, from Craig, that was like, what, two weeks ago? All it was, was changing the number from 3% to 1%. I would imagine that's an Excel function, and he said he was really good at Excel, so much better than we are, that we couldn't even have the Excel document. Mr. Walker, how much longer before we get those documents from Mr. Seymour?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think the intention is to provide the council a full package of all the answers relative to each individual meeting. There were two documents that came back to the administration that listed out the questions. One's related to the DIF piece, the question that you raised, and the other was related to the LDA. I believe a bulk of the financial material is prepared, but again, there might be a few hanging issues that are remaining that we need to get packaged together before we can get that. If it's the council's desire to see some of that material that may be ready now beforehand, before we package it together, I'm sure we can, we can talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know when the next DIF meeting is, but I'd like to see it at enough time to, you know, learn Excel before then. All right. So last question on, as it relates to that iCube, Section 12. It's weird to me that the LDA says, what is the exact language? For so long as this agreement remains in effect, the city will not take any action to rededicate those funds, referring to the $40 million in iCube funds, to any other development project in the city. I don't understand how it's in either party's best interest for that line to be in there. So that restricts us from using iCube money anywhere else other than for this garage. If we were able to find funding for this garage in some other way, say a federal grant or something, I mean, I don't know, but just hypothetically, this agreement makes it so that we can't use iCube funding elsewhere. I, and especially if we're meeting our parking, this document sets out a parking obligation that we have to the redeveloper, regardless of iCube or not iCube. So why would we include a clause that says we can't rededicate those funds to any other development project in the city? I feel like that's very limiting in what the city can do unnecessarily.
That's a fair point, and that's language that we need to look back at. Part of that springs from the fact that we already have a preliminary request in, for iCube, for that specific purpose, and it's been given, it was renewed by the Department of Transportation. So I think it's really tied to the fact that the DIF that's still in gestation, so to speak, is tied to that garage. But certainly, your point is a point well taken, and we should have language that will tighten that up.
I mean, because if we can pay for it else, in another way, we should be able to.
Yes.
And the DIF that the council's considering, we're being asked to fund the entirety of the parking garage cost, and the iCube money would just reduce the debt obligation. So once we, if this body were to pass the DIF, that box is checked in terms of our obligation for that parking lot. Mr. Walker, do you have something you wanted to?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Vane.
Could be wrong, but I do not believe that the DIF as proposed in this package has any funding for actual construction of a garage. What we've said from the beginning is that the funding for a garage that is included in this DIF package includes everything up to a shovel in the ground. We're acknowledging that we're going to build a garage on that, in that general area, regardless of whatever that funding mechanism is, whether it's iCube, whether it's the city, whether it's a federal grant, so that.
True, fair enough. I guess I overstated, because obviously if we're, I mean, from a policy perspective, if we're going to design a garage and buy imminently domain, take land and pay for it, we're pretty much pot-committed to the garage.
Right.
But the funding specifically for it is not in that.
Which is our, which is our point that I think the mayor's team has tried to make clear, is that we are pot-committing on a garage through this DIF proposal, even though the actual construction costs are still to be determined.
No, I recall, and it probably makes it harder to ask the state for money when you already have an authorization to spend it from the City Council in a bonding capacity to do so. So it makes sense that we're not including it now.
And there's a reality that we need to get to a point that we are shovel-ready, particularly when it comes to iCube. I don't think the state is going to look too kindly on us if we come to them for the full package, if we come to the state with a garage that's designed and ready to go, and by the way, being supported by the private development that's also underway and ready to go. They have much more aptitude to give us the green light.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, and just in conclusion, Bill, there's some exhibits that we still don't have. Just going to, let's see, the separate exhibit packet, looking at Exhibit D, which is the contract between the City of Quincy and FRP pursuant to Section 6A of 121A. Then, that then has sub-exhibits, which is Exhibit A and Exhibit A1.
We'll provide that with the other documents, I'm sorry.
Okay. No, that's fine, I just, but it's, I'm trying to follow along what some of these definitions mean, and they refer to exhibits, you know, as defined in or, you know, as shown on Exhibit A or A1, and then I don't have it, so it's tough enough to follow this stuff. But, so this particular exhibit, Exhibit D, this one I've really had trouble kind of grasping the meaning of. I read it a couple of times, and it's kind of escaping me. But, so the 6A agreement is essentially about the property taxes that the redevelopment will pay, right?
That is correct.
Okay. He's just roaming around. It strikes me that, okay, so just go into that, right, Exhibit D, page three, what section is this? Looks like 1, 2, 3, 3B? 3B. Section 3B says, "Operation period in any calendar year following December 31 on which the medical office building project has achieved construction completion, the operation period, and ending on the date which the project is no longer subject to Chapter 121A of the general laws. The contract amount payable with respect to the medical office building project shall be $0." I don't understand what that means.
I'm sorry, Counselor?
3B, 3B of Exhibit D. I mean, usually I have a, like, at least a partial understanding of what something means. I get nothing on this section. I have no idea what this is saying. I get the general principle of the 6A agreement is that they're not going to pay taxes on the medical use, because medical uses are typically exempted as nonprofits from paying taxes. However, because FRP will own the building, they would have to pay taxes, but because the end user is a medical use, we're somehow going to enter into an agreement that they wouldn't have to pay the taxes otherwise. I get that principle, but I don't understand that section. I don't know.
Let me get back to you, Counselor.
Okay, and maybe we talk about it offline, you could, somebody could walk me through this agreement and how I'm supposed to take it. So, okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor.
Anything else wishing?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Sometimes spending your life in the weeds, I just wanted to clarify an answer I provided to President Kroll with respect to the garage. The budget request that's in the DIF request before you, $3 million of that $61 million is for the design of the garage. Currently, that design, it's, the first phases of that design, of course, will be preliminary. That's what I meant by preliminary, that they, we need still to look at the location aspect of how the garage is going to sit, and that will require us to make some decisions. But the $3 million is anticipated to provide a final design that, as Mr. Walker said, will be shovel-ready, and having it being shovel-ready is an advantage when we're applying for funds from both federal and state sources.
All surface level, this time?
Yes, no, yes, sir. No subterranean level, which makes it, as we know, easier, faster, and cheaper.
So I know that there were a lot of questions tonight. There was, there's information that needs to get back to the council. I know we have an amendment that was tabled, and we want to do some work on some of those issues between now and our next session, but I don't think we have anything scheduled for.
I just put someone on the calendar, I was going to announce it at the conclusion of this meeting.
Okay, good enough, good enough.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Gary. Okay. If no one else wishes to speak, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, especially Hospital Neighbor Association, and for all your work that you've put into sharing your opinions, which are valid, diligent, important. Thanks for FoxRock, thank you, Mr. Gary, as always. Thanks for CBT for being here tonight. Thanks to my colleagues for their comments tonight. I guess we've got some follow-up to do. We've got the amendment as suggested by HHNA that's been tabled to consider, and we also have a list of outstanding items that the clerk will be following up with the mayor's office to procure by the next meeting, which we're scheduled for Monday, May 20, at 6:30 p.m., which will be just before the council meeting that night. That being the case, call this meeting to a conclusion, 9:56.